All right.
Good evening, this is a continuation of the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, June 7th, 2016. We began our meeting in executive session. We'll continue now with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. As always, we begin our meeting with an opportunity for the public to address the board. Is anyone here this evening that would like to address the Board of Selectmen? Yes, sir. Name and address, please. Well, most people know who you are. All right. Mike Waylon, 262 Wood Street.
I'm here as Chairman of the Veteran Celebration Committee. And on behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank all the citizens of Hopkinen for their participation in the last Memorial Day here last week. We had a little bit of a scramble because of the weather, and it turned out just fine. Had a very large crowd. So, and just here tonight, I want to thank just some of the participants who actually showed up here tonight. The old god, New England, who provided the gun salute over there. Don McNeil and Dave Codillo over there in attendance, as is most of our Veteran Celebration Committee. I also want to thank the high school band, the scouts, St. John's Church, of course, for providing the venue, the police department, who were going to help out if it was outside, but it turned to be inside, the fire department, who was in attendance, that was well appreciated. And of course, I'd like to thank the Selectmen for those who attended, and John for his excellent speech. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. I've been to many of the Memorial Day celebrations since getting involved in town government, not all of them. This was the first year I attended one inside, and I really, I really could feel the emotion in the room that day. I thought it was a great experience, and you guys did a great job. Thank you very much. Mr. Catino did an excellent job representing the board and the community, and thank you for your speech. It was really well done. Thank you, Mike. Mrs. Wright.
I just want to add a thank you. There were ten citizens that came to Evergreen Cemetery later in the afternoon, and together of those ten people, they cleaned sixty veterans' headstones. Most of them were well over a hundred years old that had fallen into disrepair. It was a wonderful display of really caring for our veterans and the amount of work that ten citizens did. So, thank goodness, thank you.
Awesome. Okay. Anybody else would like to address the board this evening? Another person, it'll have to state his name.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board, and welcome to new members of the board. Reason I'm here, Mr. Chairman, is just, I've seen a fallin' out of the loop of the downtown revitalization. I know a couple of years ago, it seemed to be the buzz. There was the DIS committee, there were public meetings, it seemed to be in the paper every week, and kind of got an update of what was going on. I guess I fell out of loop, because I really don't know what's going on. I know there were some big projects, you know, they talked about taking the house at the corner of Wood Street, burying the lines, straightening out the intersection, the bike lane. I mean, all these things were thrown out, and I don't know where any of those stand. I don't know where the project stands. So, I know my time's short here, your time's valuable up there, so I don't expect all the answers, but where would I or other residents go to get updated on where this project stands, what has been approved, what has not been approved, and what is the town looking for?
Okay. Mr. Kamal.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, in fact, for stepping forth and bringing this issue to everybody's attention. In fact, at the board's next meeting, July 21st, sorry, June 21st, town will provide an update on the project. We also are beginning the phase of conducting extensive public consultations, which will lead to the public hearing process with Mass General. And we will certainly be looking for individuals who are willing to work with the town, as well as with the chamber in setting this information out, and we'll certainly be reaching out to them.
Okay. So, it's June 21st?
Yes, June 21st, we'll provide an update to the board.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Anybody else? Okay. Seeing no more, we'll move ahead. Item number three on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda. We have some minutes from May 17th. We have a one-day liquor license for King Philip Restaurant and Motel Incorporated, doing businesses Philip Catering of Phillipsville, Mass, for the gun owner Action League Cookout and Meeting, to be held at the Hopkinton Sportsman's Association at 95 Lumber Street on Saturday, June 18th. We've got parade permits. There's one, two, three of them. Parade permits for the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation Cycle for Life, that shows no road closures. A parade permit for the Ashland Lions Club for a bike triathlon, that shows no road closures. That's on Sunday, June 12th. And the Mr. McIntyre, Dan McIntyre of Parks and Rec, for the July 4th Horribles Parade on July 4th, from noon to 1:00. That says no road closures, but we can discuss that, I guess. And then finally, well, two more things. Marathon fund requests, $1,000 for Babe Ruth for the purchase of uniform jerseys, $1,000 for the Hopkinton Patrolmen's Association for the purpose of repaying the association to stock the pond for the youth fishing tournament. And then the other item here, a Hiller's Pizza Common Vicular License for the Hiller's Pizza to operate at the former location of Dino's Pizza. And then also, a ban renewal, which is a bond anticipation note in the amount of $200,000. Those are the consent agenda items. Does anybody, understanding that they are consent agenda items and straightforward, want to break any of those out?
I'm good.
Everybody good? Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Mrs. Wright.
The Hiller's Pizza. It's my understanding that, say, according to an update that Mary sent to us, they have needed them to design a view or receive what they need from the building department? I'm less concerned about designing a view than the building.
So, if they don't get, even if we approve it, if they don't have the building permit, they can't do the work anyway? So, that would get sorted out at that department level? Is that a fair statement, Mr. Kamal?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, and so carries. Item number four, and this is for 7:15, a public hearing to talk about trail names. So, we're gonna hold off until 7:15 and come back to that at that time, given that it's a public hearing. You agree with that, Mr. Kamal? We'll skip over for now?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible to do the 7:15 trail, at least for the Wellzel Trail, now, ahead of time?
So, because it's a public hearing, and we posted it as a public hearing, we have to hold it at the time posted. We can't do it before. We can extend it, but we gotta open it at 7:15. So, I appreciate if you have somebody visiting with us tonight as part of the process. We'll get to it right at 7:15. We can't go early. Okay? I'm sorry, sir.
Yes, sir. Sorry, but I'm from King Philip Restaurant, so am I all set with that one-day license?
Yes, sir. Yes, that was in the consent agenda?
Yep.
Yes, you're all set. So, you want to speak with the woman behind you, Maria? She can help you out.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay? Thank you. Okay. Let's move to item number five. The Board of Selectmen will consider accepting the resignation of Michael Restegini from the Upper Charles Trail Committee. I hope I got Michael's name correct.
You did.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion specific to Mr. Restegini's resignation?
Move the board accept the resignation of Michael Restegini from the Upper Charles Trail Committee.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Wesley, thank you to Michael for being a part of the board, and on that Trail Committee, and really, you know, for doing some great things in the time.
Excellent. Anything else?
Michael's a great guy. He's put his heart and soul into that and into that committee, and I know he's got a hundred kids and going in a million different directions, and that's why he had to resign, so.
Okay.
We'll miss him.
Maria, if you could do us a favor, please, and we could put a letter together. We'll send it out to Michael to make sure that... Okay, great. Excellent. All right. So, we have a motion on the table and a second to accept the resignation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Item number six. The Board of Selectmen will consider appointing one member from the Board of Selectmen to the Elementary School Building Committee. Mr. Kamal, can you give us a little background on this committee, please?
Yes. Pursuant Mass General law, the Selectmen provide...
And women.
...a representative who, in fact, is a voting member to the Elementary School Building Committee alongside other town committees. So, this, in fact, is a position that requires full participation by the board. It's a project that has moved forward very quickly, and now we are reviewing the final designs, as well as submissions to the town permitting boards. In terms of time requirements, we meet roughly perhaps once or twice a month. Members of the committee, who are also members of working groups of the committee, meet much more regularly. Again, this is a position that is required by law and was previously held by Mr. Moser.
Is this a position that has to be a member of the Board of Selectmen, or can it be a designee of the Board of Selectmen?
Has to be a member of the Board of Selectmen.
Has to be a member of the Board of Selectmen. So, Mr. Moser, had he wanted to continue, unfortunately cannot. Okay. All right. So, with that, anybody want to be on the Elementary School Building Committee?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say that having been a member of a different elementary school building committee for a couple of years, it can be a truly gratifying experience. However...
Sounds like you're not interested.
Sounds like a sales pitch to me.
What's the time requirement to that?
You're probably looking at two hours twice a month. Maybe three hours twice a month.
It's the subcommittees, the workgroups, that start to take up more time. And I guess I'd just like to add, if anybody's interested in it, one thing to consider. You know, certainly when you go in, you need to kind of look around and get yourself familiar with what they've already done. They're on a, they're on a fast pace, and they've made a lot of decisions already. And I know they don't, they don't really have a timeline where they can slow down significantly. So, it's, again, I don't, I don't like telling people how to approach things, but you have to be kind of open to the decisions that have already been made, and willing to kind of move on, learn about them, but continue to move forward. I don't have the time for this, and as I said, I've been a part of one of these for a couple of years in the past. And so, I'd prefer to give somebody else the opportunity. But, yeah, that's just some advice, I guess.
I served on one 10 years ago before, and it never, that elementary school building didn't get built. It was before, you know, a long time back, even before the Fruit Street District Discussion came up. And the initial work, the citing, you know, the architectural selection of the architect, getting the job bid, all those things, that, and the, and getting town meeting support, that was a huge lift for the committee at that time. Much of that work is done now, and now it's gonna get into more the actual construction of the facility. So, if you're, if you're inclined to build things, now would be a time to jump in. Some of that sort of development work is behind us, and I think that will be more interesting for some. Anybody else have any thoughts? Anybody inclined to take the...
I would, I could do it.
You want to do it?
Yeah. Can I call my wife and make sure it's cool?
We generally frown on asking spouses if they can go to another meeting.
I actually had the...
We all know the answer.
When the element, when Elmwood School went through its remodel, I was in high school, and the guy who was clerk of the works was an old Hopkinen guy named Fred White. I wouldn't expect many people here to know him, but he kind of, we really had a lot to do with that, and it was pretty interesting. And where my kids are, you know, seven and five now, it might be interesting to be able to...
Yep. Okay. Does anybody else?
Unless Claire wants it. Claire, if you want, it's all you.
Anyone else have an interest in volunteering? Everybody good?
So, we have a volunteer stepping forward, and...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Mr. Tedstone.
Second that. And now we have a nomination and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Tedstone will be our representative on the Elementary School Building Committee.
I have not gotten any texts, so I'm good.
Okay. A one-day liquor license, seven minutes? I don't think so. Water hearing? I don't think so. Solid waste recycling contract renewal, seven minutes? I don't think so.
I'd rather take my chances with a liquor license.
Hard-to-review committee question there. I don't think so. Fifteen-year transfers request. Okay, Mr. Kamal, I'd like to try and tackle item number 12 next, if that's okay with you. The Board of Selectmen will consider approving the FY '16 year-end transfer requests. Can you walk us through that, please?
Yes. In your packet, we included the listing of the transfer requests that we are asking the board to approve tonight. And also, I'll share with the board that these are requests that have gone through the Appropriations Committee and received its approval. By way of introduction, Mass General, Mass General laws allow for budget transfers at the end of the fiscal year. The key here being, we're not increasing the budget, we're simply taking money from one budget center, redistributing them to another different budget center. There are limits that are drawn for such transfers, and the transfers that are before you tonight do meet the requirements of the law. The other important highlight for us is to share with you that the amount that we're requesting to transfer is within the limits of the amounts that we've asked for in prior years. And in fact, that amount has been going down over the years. And then finally, as a, as a policymaking board, you may also want to look at this from the perspective of, the town has done very well over the last years in terms of its free cash, and I can share with you that based on the current revenue projections, where we are, we may be able to continue that free trend where we are giving back a substantial amount back to next year's budget process, or to fund other needs of the town going forward. So, this is consistent with the law, doesn't change the amount of the budget, and the requests are within the limits that we have set for ourselves internally, and are within the limits that we have transferred over the last four or five years.
Okay. Why don't we start with Mr. Catino?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Tedstone.
Okay. Mr. Tedstone.
I'm good.
Mrs. Wright. Mr. Sastari.
Just a quick question, Mr. Kamal. I noticed that one of the transfers is for some costs toward the town report. The transfer itself is small, but every year when I look at the town report and the number of hard copies of the town report we have, I'm sure the, I'm sure the cost overall of printing that has got to be pretty high. And I know that there are legal requirements that we need to meet in terms of copies for every registered voter or household, or something to that effect. But can we look into other ways of meeting that obligation, and whether electronic copies are okay, as long as we have hard copies for anybody who requests them, or, you know, something like that? Because I would think that that's got to be someplace where we can save $10,000 or $20,000 or something.
Yes. That's an interesting point. It's a conversation that I think will involve also the town clerk's office, as well as the, the, our state agencies. Something worth looking into. We will continue to investigate whether we can use electronic means to distribute the report. However, for the most part, we still get traffic coming into town hall asking for the hard copies.
I'd be interested to hear how many extra copies we have at the end of the year. I guess, yeah, you know, I'd like to see how many extra copies we have at the end of the year, too. Just a thought. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Everybody good? Mr. Kamal, any other thoughts?
No additional thoughts at this point.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the budget FY '16 year-end transfer requests as submitted by Finance Director in the memo specific to transfer requests.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous and carries. Thank you. Okay. With that, and my watch says 7:15, but I know I'm two minutes early here, we'll go ahead in a minute and get ready for this public hearing. Just to kind of walk our colleagues through a public hearing process before we open it, because we'll open it right on time. This is where we vote to open the public hearing. We have the applicant or the proponent, whoever it is, make a presentation to the board. The board asks questions, and then we maybe have a little dialogue with the proponent. Then we go to the public and ask the public for their input, since it's a public hearing. And it's a little bit of a, you know, the public, the open meeting laws are, are interesting. We have to meet in public, and we have to meet in an open forum. But we don't, by law, have to take public input, meaning people addressing the board, unless we want to. A public hearing is a different scenario where you do, by law, have to take public input. So, there's certain issues that get public hearings, there's other things that don't. But, you know, we try to be accommodating to everybody, but there's a, there's a little confusion sometimes about what's a public meeting and what's a public hearing. This will be a public hearing that we're going into now. Okay? So, with that, the board's gonna open a public hearing, or I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the Mary C. O'Brien Pratt Trail and the Wellzel Trail. The Board of Selectmen will hold public hearings on the request to name the following trails. The Mary C. O'Brien Pratt Trail, northern section, on the town's Fruit Street property, and the Wellzel Trail, I hope I'm pronouncing that correct, a trail loop off the Center Trail. There are several supporting documents in the packet, but the chair will entertain a motion to open that public hearing, please.
So moved.
And there's a second. Okay. With that, we'll ask that the Trails Committee, and perhaps some of our friends from other organizations in town, make a presentation as to what they're doing or requesting, and then we'll take it from there.
Peter Legoy, 21 Hayden Row Street. I have the Joe Carner. Where are you, where do you live, Joe?
West Main Street.
West Main. And we're here as, to request the Wellzel Trail be named. It's a small trail off of the Center Trail. Before I get started, I want to express appreciation for David Golden for letting me go ahead with the Wellzel Trail, because I have the sixth-grade band concert tonight between 7:00 and 9:00, so that's what I'm trying to say.
So, you want to drag this on, or what?
No. Trying to move quickly.
We've all been there.
And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Joe. Joe was kind of spearheaded naming the trail. Initially, it was gonna be named for Andy Wellzel, and then unfortunately, his sister Jane, who's a national-class marathoner, died. And Joe can give a little more information on the family and why we feel it's appropriate to name the trail for them.
Thanks, Peter. Good evening.
Hi, Joe.
So, this all started about six years ago. Citizen of the town, you know, a person who grew up in the town, Andy Wellzel, he passed away from pancreatic cancer. Andy was a very unique individual. He was, he was a running enthusiast. He lived, and his family still does, up on Hilltop. And he would, you'd see him around town all the time with a signature red bandana on his head. And he was just full of life, and he was always pointing out new trails for people to try, and ways to connect runs, and he was just, he was a huge running enthusiast, and just had a joie de vivre, and just a life about him that was great. And so, when he went down, you know, being into that sport a little bit myself, I said, gee, wouldn't it be nice if we could do something that would memorialize that, that kind of spirit? And with the town, you know, kind of using that as a brand these days, it just seemed like, you know, to have a native son, have a small little trail named for him, thought was a good idea. You know, tragically, four years later, his sister Jane, as Peter mentioned, national-class marathoner, four-time Olympic trials participant, women's marathoner of the year in 1990, just had an incredible record and run, always was remembered as a Hopkintonian. She came back here many, many times to run races and stuff like that. Unfortunately, she also passed away from the same disease that her brother did, and it was just the pancreatic cancer. And it was just, it was, it was really a hard thing. And although things were going pretty well with the, with the trail at that point, it really put a lot more energy into it and everything else, where people said, gee, you know, that's really amazing that we had these two great representatives to, you know, to, put forward as, as, you know, running representatives of the town. And, and so that's why we're here tonight, just to try to memorialize the, you know, the efforts of these two people to bring running more into the mainstream, and, and all the work that they did in that regard.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Before we go to questions, Mr. Kamal, can we sort of separate or split the question here and address and stay in public hearing, but also vote on this trail so that Mr. Legoy can go do what he's got to do? Or do we have to close the public, public hearing before we can vote on this particular trail? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I, I think we have to treat both as a group, because that's how the public hearing was opened.
Yeah, okay. So, we can't split the question.
But if you vote, yes.
Got it. Okay. Just checking. Okay. Thank you for that input. Full disclosure, Mr. Carner and I have run before in the past. He is wicked fast, as they say. So, I don't think I'll be running on this trail with him, because he is wicked fast, but he's a great guy to run with. Mr. Tedstone.
I think this is great. The Wellzel family is a wonderful family. I read a nice letter from Mark Stickney in support of this, and I know that area like the back of my hands. I grew up in that, at the end of Chamberlain Street, so I've been, I've been out, I did a, off the record, I guess on the record, I packed down all those trails this year with my snowmobile, so.
Thank you.
So, all you guys can use them in the winter.
Yeah.
So, no thanks necessary. I'm glad to do it. But it's a good, I think it's great.
Mr. Catino.
Yeah, this is, you know, this is exactly the type of family, type of individuals that trails should be named after, people that actually used them and trailblazed them.
Mrs. Wright.
No, it's a great little trail. I've walked it a number of times myself. I was kind of wondering why there was just a stick of the ground with a piece of paper stuck on it. And, you know, I, I like the idea that we put some signage up on our trails to let people know they're just not on some trail in the woods going through somebody's yard or private property, so I think we should be marking our trails. And the story of the Wellzel family couldn't put, couldn't have a better idea. I fully support this.
Yeah. You know, I, I can't say that I know of the Wellzels, but in reading what's in the packet, you know, it seems like a touching story, and I'd say that they're lucky to have friends and supporters like you. And it's great when we can have people with the real institutional memory in town and connections in town from longer ago than, than just the past decade or so. Bring these things to light so that we can make sure that these people are commemorated.
Thank you, Tom. It's a great trail. It's a great spot in town. I've run it a couple of times already and really enjoy it, and I think this is a fantastic way to honor their lives. So, with that, we'll thank you folks for that input, and we'll ask Mr. Goldman to join us for another trail naming. Peter, I think you're all set, so if you got to do your thing, you'll be fine. Thank you. We have another trail that Mr. Goldman's gonna present to us now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Selectmen, welcome, Mr. Tedstone. Welcome, Claire. It's nice to see some new faces on the board. Not that the old faces were a problem. It's nice to see some new faces on the Board, not that the old faces were a problem, but anyway. I'm here tonight to talk about the Fruit Street property and the conservation restriction that's on that property shared by Halt and, by SVT, and talk about naming another section of, of the trails. Is there anybody that's gonna operate the?
The Board has the, the material.
Okay, I don't know why I did the presentation, though, but nevertheless. Um, the, uh, in your packets, there are five slides. The first slide describes the conservation restriction in itself and defines the conservation area in green. That conservation restriction was put on, I think, about two or three years ago. Since that time, we have, along with Sudbury Valley, erected a sign along the road that goes into the athletic fields that defines the Fruit Street Conservation Area. And we have opened the trail on the southern side of the, of the open space. And that trail has signage as well in two locations. One is on the Loop Road, or on the Input Road, about halfway to the athletic fields. The other sign is at the gate to the wastewater treatment facility. The second slide in the packet defines all the trails that are in the Fruit Street properties that are on the conservation restriction. What the Halt and SVT would like to do is to name the Northern Section Trails, well, let me put it this way, the Southern Section Trail is named the Mary C. Pratt Trail, Southern Section. So in keeping with that, we'd like to name the Northern Trail Sections, the Mary C. O'Brien Pratt Northern Section Trails. And I've put up in your packets signage that shows the Southern Section actual signs and the proposed sign for the Northern Section Trail.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Sastari.
I do not have any questions.
This is Ray.
I don't have any questions, but I know the first part of the trail. It makes total sense to me to name the other half Mary Pratt as well.
Well, the other reason why we would like to do that is that the Northern Section Trails will abut the property that now the town owns, the old Pratt Farm, and subsequently in future years, I expect there will be trails in that property as well, so the trails can continue on into the Pratt property.
Mr. Tedstone.
I'm good.
Mr. Catino.
Yeah, thank you for the, for the great slides. It makes, makes the job so easy.
You're welcome. We try to make it easy.
I had, I had the great honor of sitting there for a year or two, and Mrs. Pratt sat here for a couple of years. And strange as it was to some in town, we became a voting block, and we had great fun here on the Board. No one, I don't think, has worked as hard to protect the trails and develop the trails in Hopkinton than Mrs. Pratt. She did a fantastic job in that regard, and I think this is very fitting to name this trail after, after Mrs. Pratt. I hope she's watching. We miss her on the Board. Every now and then, I'd have to write her a little note to tell her to behave. I'd slip it to her, and she'd scribble something back that I won't repeat and slip it back to me. But she was fa, a fantastic Board of Selectman member, and a true advocate for our outdoor community here in Hopkinton, and I, I'm really excited to vote for this trail name for Mrs. Pratt.
In, in passing, I will say that Mary has served on our Board of Directors of the Trust for, she's the founder of the Trust, along with four of, four others of us, and she's had, served and still serves on the Board of the Trust as a Director. Unfortunately, she's not been active for the past two years, because she's been off in a, a nursing home in Natick, and we're probably going to elect her as a Director Emeritus very shortly.
Great.
Well, I happen to see Mrs. Pratt every single, five days a week, and Mrs. Pratt is, she was instrumental on helping me get onto the Board of Selectmen, and I will double your sentiment. We weren't on TV, but she has comments on everything, and they're, they're pretty fun comments, so I think this is great to, to be able to see.
The, the first handful of years after she was no longer on the Board, I would talk to her, and, you know, there was a period where she was coming to the meetings, and then she stopped, and I'd call her up every few months, and I'd say, you know, Mary, we miss you at the Board meetings, you know, how come you're not coming? You gotta stop by and visit. You people are boring. It's not even entertaining anymore. But she had, but she had, and still has, I'm sure, such integrity. You know, I was, I was in the election with her, and there was one point where somebody had taken one of my lawn signs from one place and put it on somebody else's lawn, and they pulled hers up and removed it, so it made the person look like they were supporting me rather than Mary. And, you know, the person put all sorts of signage around it with arrows, saying, don't vote for this person, pointing to my sign. And Mary was the first one on the phone, calling me up, saying, I just want to let you know, I'm sure you didn't put your sign on that guy's lawn, but, you know, this is happening, and you should probably give him a call. And, you know, she wasn't interested in any kind of, you know, chicanery, I guess. You know, she just wanted good things to happen, and an even playing field for everyone, and I miss seeing her around.
Absolutely.
I saw Mary recently. I gave her blow-by-blow descriptions on how to watch the Selectmen's meeting online, so Mary, you better be watching.
I thought that was Mrs. Pratt calling right now to tell me something.
I will.
I wouldn't doubt it.
Mary, I can.
If she texts, that would be a lot of fun, because she'd text them.
I can tell you that Mary will be watching it at about 11:15 tonight.
Yeah, good. Well, please tell her we said hello, and I think it's just a great, great honor for her. Anything else, Mr. Goldman?
Yeah, if the Board is so inclined to, to grant this request, I would have one request, Mr. Tedstone, that you print the slides that I have offered in support of this and give them to Mary. I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely. No problem. She'll have them in her hand by 11:00.
Thank you.
Mr. Kamal, any thoughts?
In fact, it's very befitting and appropriate that the first two applications to come through the town's recently approved asset naming process are the ones that the Board is discussing tonight. I can tell you that it's been a great pleasure for staff working with the two proponents. The mission that they provided for us was quality information. And also, what I enjoyed throughout this process was testing the whole idea of a public hearing process and notifying abutters. It was pretty, a pretty interesting challenge, identifying abutters for the Fruit Street request. However, we did circulate the information to some of the abutters, realizing the significance of the parcel, as well as the significance of the name suggested. I also, I want to acknowledge the, the letter that was included in the packet for the other trail. I thought the, we want to thank the residents for taking their time and putting together that thoughtful letter.
Great. I think these are two great actions, that we have an opportunity to move on. Okay, so with that, is there anyone from the public that would like to offer any input specific to the trail namings in front of us? Okay, so seeing no public input, I think it's appropriate then to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? I should say, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the public hearing is now closed, and the Board of Selectmen in its next step would, quote, deliberate, or we can move forward with a motion and take our action.
I have no, nothing to deliberate. I would be surprised if we had any discussion on this, to not move forward as moved.
Well, that could jinx it right there. Now that you said that, fair enough. Okay, so, the Board will entertain a motion to approve the naming of the two trails brought before us this evening, specifically the Mary C. O'Brien Pratt Trail, Northern Section, on the town's Fruit Street property, and the Wellzell Trail, a trail loop off the Center Trail in the center of town. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Congratulations to Mrs. Pratt and the Wellzell family for their contributions to Hopkinton, and please give them our best, and please, obviously, let the trails and the running club know what's going on. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great night. Okay. We've taken care of number five, we've taken care of number six. We can move to item number seven now, with the understanding that we've got our next public hearing at 8:00 PM. So I think we can get through this one-day liquor license between now and 8:00 PM, and then we'll do that public hearing and move on to some other items. So, item number seven on our agenda, the Board of Selectmen will consider a one-day alcoholic beverages liquor license from Cary Parades of 10A Church Street, Hopkinton, to be held at St. John the Evangelist Church at 20 Church Street, Hopkinton, on Saturday, June 25th, from 5:30 to 11:00 PM. It's my understanding that this application is for a wedding that will be, a wedding ceremony or, what's the word I'm looking for?
Reception.
Reception. Thank you, following a wedding at St. John's. Mr. Kamal.
Yes, the request as described by the Chair was circulated to town permitting departments for comments. We did not receive any adverse comments. The comment of note is from the Police Department. They are requiring that all servers be TIP certified. No alcohol is to be consumed or taken off premises, and that they will be adequate staffing to ensure that any person under 21 has no access to alcohol. And the Police Department is available to meet with the parades to explain any details regarding this plan.
Okay. Is the applicant here by chance, or a representative of the applicant here by chance? Hi, would you mind joining us at the podium for a minute? If you could share with us your name?
My name is Barbara Wernham, and I'm the bride's mom.
Hi, Barbara, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for hearing us.
Do you want to just kind of fill us in from your perspective on this application specific to St. John's?
It's for June 25th, for my daughter's wedding. The wedding, the ceremony's gonna take place at 5:00 outside, and then the reception is to follow in St. John's Parish Hall. The company that will be serving the alcohol and providing the alcohol is fully insured, and also their staff is entirely TIP certified.
Okay. How many people will be attending the wedding, if you don't mind my asking?
Right now, it's looking at somewhere between 150 to 160.
Always nice how it comes down to the last minute, and you're trying to figure it out, right? So 150 to 160 people, okay. And Mr. Kamal, and, and Barbara, just bear with us while we go through some of this, because we have to make sure we get this right. Mr. Kamal, you said something about how they're gonna make sure no one under 21 is served?
Yes, and that's a request that came from the Police Department. Specifically, they are requiring that there be adequate staffing to ensure that that does not happen.
So how do we define adequate staffing for a wedding of 150 people?
If it's okay, the Chief is here to answer the question, Mr. Chair.
Chief Lee, welcome.
The, the staff, I assume, the caterers?
Yes.
And bartenders?
Mm-hmm.
And the waiters, if they're all TIP certified, you know, I imagine with that amount of people, there should be about?
They, there's at least five bartenders, and they're all TIP certified.
That should be more than sufficient.
St. John's has had these one-day licenses numerous times in the past, so they get it, St. John's does. But I don't know if this organization or this big company that's coming in to cater and staff the bar has been there before or not. Just let them know, you know, we gotta run this thing by the books. It's gotta be 21. If they're not 21, no way, no how.
That's right.
Typical, you would expect. We don't, are we gonna have an officer over there, by chance? Do we need to have an officer there?
There's no question, you know, detail, and I don't believe we need one.
Okay. They'll just be aware of that event in town at that time. Yeah, okay. And is there a band or a music venue as part of the?
There'll be a DJ as well.
DJs are fun. DJs are great.
We're putting the playlist together now, so.
What kind of cake are we having?
Actually, my daughter's daycare provider is making her cake for us. She's a town resident as well.
Excellent.
Nancy Mercer.
I understand you'll be having representation from Fort Wayne, Indiana, at this wedding.
There will be representation from Fort Wayne, Indiana.
Forky Tyler.
Okay. All right, so, does anyone else have any questions specific to the request? Why don't we start with Mr. Tedstone? Any other questions?
No. It looks pretty good, from everything that I see and everything that I know. I have no issues.
Mr. Catino.
Is this little Courtney?
Carrie. Courtney's next year. Next June.
I know these brides. I, I'm new to this liquor licensing stuff, but I have to make the assumption that where they are hiring a professional cocktail company, cocktails raising the bar, they know what they're doing. This is, this is their business, so.
Yes.
I, I, I don't have any problems with this.
No? We're surprised we're remaining after years.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming. So.
We'd like to make a motion that we approve the license.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous, and so carries. All set. You'll get your license through the Town Manager's Office. Mr. Kamal, is that, they'll come through Maria?
Yes, please contact Maria in our office, she'll be happy to help you.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Please wish your daughter the best.
Best wishes.
And her, and her future husband. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have a public hearing at 8:00 on the sewer rates, so we'll come back to that. We were scheduled, you know, roughly at 8:30 to talk about the solid waste recycling contract renewal process and renewal itself. I think we could probably tackle that now, or try to, anyway, and then we'll come to our public hearing at 8:00. So if we, item number nine, Mr. Kamal.
Chair, how about if we move to item number 10?
Mr. Kamal, we'd like us to move to item number 10. Mr. Sastari, are you okay with doing that?
Yeah, I don't, whatever.
Okay, we'll move to item number 10, per Mr. Kamal's request. The Charter Review Committee questionnaire. The Board of Selectmen will review the questionnaire from the Charter Review Committee. Mr. Kamal, you want to walk us through this, please?
Yes, and, and Mrs. Sastari, feel free to, to jump in, because Mr. Sastari is the Board's representative on the Charter Review Committee. This is a list of questions put together by the Charter Review Committee and shared with town boards, committees, and town staff. We, we felt that it was important that we bring this questionnaire to the Board's attention. It's focusing on issues and challenges that the Board may have faced in implementing the current charter, the budget process, as well as comments on elected versus appointed positions in the town charter. There is also a request for any comments or suggestions with regards to likely revisions to, to the charter. Again, the Charter Review Committee is in the process of seeking information. There will be further public hearings to be held by the Committee. The, the end game here is to identify areas for strengthening the charter, bring those to a town meeting, and subsequently to a, a townwide vote.
Okay. Mr. Sastari, anything to add to that?
I think that Mr. Kamal summed it up pretty well. The Charter Review Committee's been meeting since January, and in the last, I think, The Charter Review Committee's been meeting since January, and in the last, I'd say, month and a half to two months, it's, we've gotten to a point where the Charter Review Committee put together this questionnaire. As Mr. Kamalow mentioned, they distributed it to the various committee chairs and department heads, looking for input, and they've also been inviting people to come to the meetings to go through their input. And so they've been going through, you know, they'll, we'll talk to anywhere from four to five different committee and department heads in a meeting. Done that for the last three meetings. This was actually sent out, I want to say it was at the beginning of April, but unfortunately, we were going headfirst into the budget and town meeting preparation, and so the former Chair never had an opportunity to bring it in front of the Board for discussion. So, at this point, we'd just like to, I say "we" as the Charter Review Committee, would like to get the Board of Selectmen's feedback, and as we're putting that feedback together, I guess, you know, if it's okay with the Board, I'd be fine with representing the Board's views at that meeting, or if the Chair or Vice Chair would rather go to represent the Board and its opinions, that's fine as well.
Okay. So, specific action requests for this evening, is it to approve the questionnaire, or just to offer input on the questionnaire?
To offer input.
Okay. All right, with that, do you have any input you want to offer as a Board of Selectmen member?
Well, you know, so, I get to, I'm lucky, because I get to, in effect, take two bites at the apple here, I guess, and, you know, I can contribute to the conversation here, and have a vote in what the Board's view is in terms of direction or comment on these various questions. And then when I'm also down in the Charter Review Committee, obviously, we have our own discussions around these questions as well. The Charter Review Committee has not taken votes or stands on any issues at this point, we're still trying to get input. We've given various options, and some opinions, and things of that nature, but no formal votes on anything. So I guess my preference would be to let the rest of the Board kind of offer their input on the various questions. I'm happy to give my input as well, but I don't think I'd prefer to, I guess, direct people or drive the conversation from an opinion standpoint, anyway.
Okay. Mrs. Wright, do you have any thoughts on the questionnaire?
Not at the moment, it looks like a good questionnaire.
Pretty thorough.
Should we go through one question at a time, and see if the Board has comments?
Want to do it that way?
Sure.
We can do that. Do you want to walk us through that?
Sure. So the first question is, have you encountered problems or issues with the rules in the current town charter that have affected your ability to do your job? If yes, please explain in detail. So, you know, I guess, you know, it's difficult, it's difficult to approach this without, I guess, kind of going through the town charter itself, but I'm not sure if any of my fellow Board members, and certainly this is something where I think even, even events that might have happened when you weren't on the Board of Selectmen, you know, are certainly valid. But has there ever been a time where you've wanted to get something done, and someone has said, "Ah, I can't do that," you know, it's, "Town Charter prevents us from doing that."
So do you want those, you think, looking for those specific examples tonight? I thought we were looking at just the questions and sort of the frame of the questionnaire.
If, that's another option, is going through the questions and giving people something to study between now and the next meeting.
Mr. Kamalow, what do you think?
Yeah, I think it may be helpful for the Board to perhaps identify in very general terms what the answers could be to these questions. For example, I can also help the Board by way of identifying some issues that Board members have brought to my attention. For example, I think with regard to number one, one of the challenges that the Board has faced is that provision regarding who has authority in overseeing the licensing process in town. Clearly, that's something that needs to be fixed.
Okay.
Yes. We have, the Board has also in the past, and I think this ties in with question number three, has in the past discussed some of the constraints and limitations regarding the budget timelines, as well as the general question as to who has oversight over the town meeting warrant process.
Okay. Any other big ones jump out at you?
Yeah, I think there's also been discussion in the past regarding how we better align the schedules for town meeting with the budget timeline.
Yeah.
There's also been questions with regards to perhaps the need to have an established process for managing Board reorganization processes, namely whether chairs should rotate or not rotate. There've also been discussions in the past with regard to the organization of staffing here at Town Hall.
So, specific to the Board Chairs piece, for the Board of Selectmen, there is in the Charter specific language as to how, when, and how long people can serve as Chair of this particular Board.
That's actually not in the town charter, that's in our...
The handbook.
Yeah, our own handbook.
Oh, that's in the operating procedures.
Yeah, the rules of procedure.
I got you, okay, thank you. All right, so maybe it needs to go to the Charter?
And that's, yeah, that's...
Want to further codify.
Yeah, that's one suggestion, is that, you know, all Boards have some, you know, kind of term limit on the position of Chair, or something to that effect.
Yeah, I like the idea of having that in the Charter, taking it from our Board, our policies and procedures, and putting it into the Charter, but not just for this Board, for all Boards. I think a two-year, maybe, limit, term limit, and then a year off, and then you can come back, but no more than two years at one consecutive years at a time.
Right.
Something along those lines.
And there have been, and there have been members of other Boards who have raised concerns, saying that they're members of Boards that, you know, people are happy to serve on the Board, but nobody wants to be Chair. And the person who is Chair, you know, is maybe the only one, or even that person is there, you know, in the position itself reluctantly. You know, other people say that in order for their Board to continue progress on various issues, they feel that it's important for a person to be in that position for more than two years, and things of that nature. So there are arguments against it as well. You know, personally, I'm in favor of the limitation, in saying, you know, two years in a row is enough, then let's give somebody else a chance. If you come back after that year off, then, then, great, you know, but you get another two years, and then take another, another year off.
What if no one else wanted it?
I'm sorry?
What if no one else wanted it?
You could address that.
Yeah.
In the, I mean, so...
There is, there is language in the, in that handbook, that it's a two-year, and then it goes to a vote if you're, if you wanted more than whatever the, whatever the maximum was, it would go to the vote for the Board to vote. So...
So term limits in general, into the discussion for Charter Review, I think it's coming out of this Board. I personally like term limits for office holders as well, I'm a big term limits person. I think what goes on in Washington DC is a great example of why we need term limits at all levels of government. You know, I think, I would love the idea of term limits for Selectmen, at maybe four terms, and Planning Board members at two or three terms, I mean, I like that idea, so that would be something I'd put out there as one member.
Clearly, if somebody wants to be on this Board for more than four terms, they're crazy.
We need to limit them, because there's something going on there.
They're crazy, and they shouldn't be.
I'd be saying them at midnight every...
So I think term limits is an interesting idea in general, just the overall concept of term limits, we can't solve that here tonight, but that's one member's thought.
Another thing, another thing that we've discussed is, you know, we're trying to, we're trying to get together somewhat of a hierarchical chart that shows all the different committees and Boards in town, and their relationship to other committees and Boards, so which ones, you know, report directly to them, you know, looking at, looking at, I guess, kind of the decisions that they're making in the jurisdiction of each, and trying to create more of a definition of, okay, if you're on Board A, you can't be on Board B too, you know, because there's a conflict there. There have been situations in the last couple of years where we've said, you know, if you're here and you're here, you're getting two votes on the same issue, much like what I just described, actually, and, you know, you're getting, you're getting two bites at the apple there. And, so, you know, there are scenarios like that that we've discussed as well.
Sure. I like the idea, specific to the budget process, of having a joint budget committee, where we have a five-member or seven-member joint budget committee through, that meets from November 1 to March 31, before we submit to appropriations, and that committee is comprised of two members of the Board of Selectmen, two members of the School Committee, two members of the Appropriations Committee, and maybe somebody else, or a member of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager, a member of the School Committee and the Superintendent. We did that as an ad hoc organization a few years back, but I like the idea of doing that in a more formal way, to bring a more one-town, one-solution approach to the budget process. So something like that, I'd like to throw into the mix under budget topics.
Yep.
Any other thoughts, or other things people want to put in? We've talked about the electing thing before, so the Board, the Board of Selectmen, perhaps not this Board, the Board of Selectmen, has weighed in on elected versus appointed for Town Clerk, and, well, the DPW we resolved in the past, what other ones were there?
Well, some of the highly technical ones, ones that should be looked at, where policy comes from a, from a knowledge base that may not come from a general populace, that we might need somebody that's more learned in a, in a specific field.
But which offices would that be?
Board of Health is another one, when it comes to septic systems and that kind of Because, you know, they're ruling on whether or not a...
Can you speak up, Mr. Cattino?
Oh, sorry.
No, I just can't hear you over here.
Oh, sorry. No, whether or not that, you know, a proponent gets relief if they're putting it in another bedroom, or they're putting it in a basement, and whether or not that the tight restrictions when it comes to septic systems, whether or not they get relief and they're allowed to actually put this addition on without having to update the whole septic system. You know, that sometimes can take some deep thinking.
So, would you be, are you suggesting that the Board of Health be appointed as opposed to elected? I don't know if we can do that, particular Board, that way.
I think that, yeah, I think that that type, I think that that type of change requires a longer process than, than the typical changes we discuss, and it's not something that our group is closed to.
That might be a mass general law, control Board. Do you know if that's the case, Mr. Kamalow?
Not necessarily. There are appointed Boards of Health and elected Boards of Health.
Those are appointed versus...
But I think to Mr. Sastari's point, it takes a much longer and sustained discussion to get to that type of a change.
Yeah, I got you, okay.
Some of the other, some of the other things that, you know, have been discussed, have been around, as Mr. Kamalow mentioned, the organization of Town Hall. So, one of the things that we've done, you know, as we're reading through the town charter, and we're reading the foreword, you know, it talks about, one of the, one of the intents of the town charter was to bring in a more centralized, professional form of government, so that we can prepare for the town's growth. And, so, right now, we're, the town is somewhat in this position where we've got one foot on the platform and one foot on the train. And an example that I'm thinking of is when there's a paid position in Town Hall that is appointed by a Board or a Committee, and now that employee is working within Town Hall, and Mr. Kamalow, as Town Manager, he's, he's in the town charter as having authority over the organization of Town Hall. And you get a, you get situations where not all Boards and Committees have the time, bandwidth, whatever desire, wherewithal, I don't know what it is, to give that, that direction that's needed over that town employee. When it comes to working on things like the budget, things of that nature, it often falls greatly onto Mr. Kamalow's shoulders to help the employees, and he doesn't complain about it, I mean, he understands, it is part of his job, it's something that we expect him to do, helping the person through the budget, helping them through various day-to-day components of their job. And then, in the end, you know, it's, it's one of these kind of dotted line connections in theory, but there's no official dotted line there. So, it can, it can end up being a difficult situation at times, where Mr. Kamalow is, is responsible for the success within Town Hall from all angles, and yet, not all of the employees are necessarily under his, under his umbrella or under his organization. And so, that's something that we've discussed in the Charter Review Committee, you know, and you can, you know, quote-unquote, solve it if you think that there's a problem, a couple of different ways. You know, one way is to say, well, this person strictly reports to this Board or Committee. Now, you're kind of going counter to what the intent of the Charter was, or you could say, well, yes, this, this group, they do have the authority, or they have input, or they still have the authority to hire a person, but that person reports to the Town Manager, or a different manager that reports to the Town Manager, or something to that effect. You know, does it, does it create huge problems on a day-to-day basis? I don't know that it does that, Mr. Kamalow, but we know better. Have we run into issues where it's created tricky, tricky situations here and there? You know, I'll say that, yes, we have, but, you know, it's, it's something that, not necessarily our Board, but the town needs to decide, you know, is this something that we want to leave as status quo, or do we want to nudge in one direction or the other to resolve the issue?
It's very common in the private sector, anyway, to have matrix reporting structures. You know, you've got dotted lines that are pre-firm dotted lines, but it's still, you know, sort of management by a Committee in many of the cases. Even in those situations, though, ultimately, there's somebody towards the top of that structure that has a final say. If there's a conflict down below in that matrix structure, somebody has the final say, and I think that's what we probably need to work towards, is we're going to have, I think, a healthy dialogue and sort of internal debate about getting some things done, but, you know, if, if, if we stall, or it becomes a problem, then the Town Manager, in my view anyway, steps in and makes the determination, and that's the deal. So something along those lines is, I think, what you're describing, that's kind of what I would support, anyway.
Functional management versus program management, I got everything.
Yeah. So something along those lines, I think.
Yeah, and I think, and I think also that, in the past, it was made more difficult, because, you know, Mr. Kamalow was taking on, well, basically, he was taking everything on himself from the Town Manager's Office, and now that, you know, there is, there is a role in there to lend support to him, I'm hoping that that can also help the situation where these various Boards and Committees, you know, in theory, can, can have a stronger relationship with the Town Manager's Office as, as we're moving forward on this.
Okay. Any other topics people want to put out real quick for the Charter Commission or Committee to consider?
Yeah, I just, we touched on this a little bit with Board of Health, certain Committees that require a particular level of professional expertise on occasion. You look at something like the Board of Health, and it's only a three-person Board, and there are times, more often than not, they're dealing with things like septic issues, but occasionally there is a medical issue, and I don't know whether that Board brings in outside consultants, or whether we always have the in-house capabilities between the health agent to answer those questions. I just, I know years ago, before the Charter, when we first moved to town, my husband, as a, as a physician, was what they called an associate member, and I don't know that he attended all the meetings, but I think he was sort of an adjunct member that was there to provide assistance if it was a medical issue. You know, you could get... You know, you could get into a situation, we have three people that run for that board, none of which really have the specific training to the kind of a health issue that's being dealt with. Are those boards, Board of Health is the one that comes to mind, but a board where there's some specific professional expertise sometimes required in their decision-making, something we might look at expanding the membership into a second tier, like an associate membership, or something to make sure that they have ready access to the level of professional expertise when it's called on?
Let me, excuse me, if I could, just jump in real quick. It's eight o'clock, I want to open this public hearing, and we'll continue this, we'll continue the hearing in one sec. So, the Chair will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2017 Water and Sewer Rates Public Hearing pursuant to the Special Act Establishing the Department of Public Works in Hopkinton. The Board of Selectmen will set the water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2017 effective July 1, 2016. I'll entertain a motion to open another public hearing for that specific purpose.
Second?
So, we have a motion and a second, open a public hearing. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing for the water and sewer rates is now open. As the Chair, I'll continue that until such time as we finish our current discussion. Mr. Sestari?
Yeah, I was going to say, I guess, for me personally, I, I look at the different situations, and I make some distinctions. And in the case of the Board of Health, A, I look at the fact that it's, it's a board, so there are multiple people contributing to decisions. B, it's a volunteer board, so, you know, the, these people are volunteering their time, and they're not getting paid. And C, there's also a director over there who does lend the professional component, just as for this board, we have a professional Town Manager who's able to guide us from a professional level. Where my, where my greatest concern is, in terms of elected versus appointed, and please take no offense, is, is an area such as Town Clerk, where we are electing someone, and the person is getting paid a salary to do something where there are a lot of rules and regulations and laws within the state that need to be complied with. So, for us to, for, we may, we may hit it lucky, and every time we have to elect a Town Clerk, we might get the best damn Town Clerk on earth, and that's great. But then there could be other situations where we elect a Town Clerk, and the person is, is not capable of doing the job. And so, now we have somebody who has gone out to, hopefully, an educated vote, but possibly, you know, just a popularity vote, and the person is bringing in a salary for three years, and the only person they answer to is the voters. And it's a heavy lift for the voters to do anything within that three years. So, now your next opportunity is at the three-year mark. But in the, in the meantime, there's three years in that position with a person who may not be capable of doing the job well. So, that's, that's kind of where my concern lies, more than, more than the volunteer boards.
There not any, I'm sorry, there not any checks and balances on those where if that person is not doing their job, or not doing their job, job at a level that's commensurate to what they're getting paid, or, or what the job entails, isn't there a, a check and balance in there where, whether it be the Town Manager, or the Board of Selectmen, or someone can start a process to look into that and then possibly remove that person?
To my knowledge, the voters can start a process, but there is no single position that can start a process.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a different subject.
So, we good on this subject for now?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah, mine was, one of the things that I run into on ZAC is that many times, it's a, it's a, it's a board that came through the planning board, yet many times, some of the issues that come up are not zoning changes, but actual bylaw changes. And real bylaw changes have to come through the Board of Selectmen. So, one of the things that we should be looking, we may, may look at is where ZAC reports to, and how ZAC generates these, whether it should be a, maybe not an offshoot of the planning board, but more of an offshoot, its own independent board that, that reports maybe to the Board of Selectmen and/or the, the planning board, because not everything really is planned.
You mean, like a, instead of a ZAC, or have a ZAC, but also have a BAC, like a bylaw advisory committee?
Something to that effect. Because, see, some of the things that people come up, come up to ZAC with are out of the purview. It's like, well, no, it's not something that we can do at this time. This is, it's, it's outside of the, it's outside of the four corners.
Got you.
And so, you know, whether or not, it's a, it's a separate board, and, well, the same thing with ZAC, because also, ZAC has, really don't, hasn't have, doesn't operate with the Charter also. It can be anywhere from five to, this year, we had fifteen or sixteen members at one time, and it's got to be quite difficult to manage as a Chair.
It's a lot of opinions at one time.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Any other ideas for the Charter Commission, specific to the questionnaire?
Nope, none for me.
I mean, is the Board interested in the budget calendar, in changing the budget calendar at all, accelerating it? I know there was some discussion by other, other committees and boards around trying to accelerate the budget calendar by as much as two months in some cases.
Meaning moving it up, or moving it back and going faster?
Starting it earlier.
Starting it earlier.
Yeah. But then, but then also having some of the deadlines be earlier as well. You know, another thing was around the control over the town warrant, in trying to help ensure that the warrant doesn't get unwieldy. You know, there, there are times when we open up, we open up the warrant for a special town meeting, is, is the case where I think of in particular, where we'd like to have a special town meeting for one particular purpose. You know, maybe it's to vote on a school, or something to that effect. But once we open the town warrant, nobody has any control over what comes in and what's put on it. So, any of the department heads, voter petitions, you know, things like that, can put any number of articles on the town warrant, and we have no control to say, no, that's not the purpose of this special town meeting. In years past, my understanding is, there was control over that, and I believe it was with the Charter, and, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, because I might just be pulling this out of my, my behind. But my understanding is that it might have been with the Charter where that was taken away, and there was discussion of putting that over with appropriations or some other group. I guess, my, my personal thought is that if there was going to be some mechanism to control it, it should be something where it's members of various boards or committees, you know, and maybe it's one or two members of the Board of Selectmen and appropriations, and, you know, I don't know who else, you know, planning board, you know, school committee, I don't know what the makeup is, but have it be a combination rather than one committee or board having full control over it.
My sense is, specific to the warrant articles, is however the structure gets massaged and sort of realigned a little bit, maybe tweaked, but however that structure falls out in this process, then those department heads that fall under whatever that structure is and their authority upline, has to be the approving body to allow department heads to put an article on the warrant. In other words, any organization that reports into the Town Manager that reports to the Board of Selectmen, has to come to the Board of Selectmen before they can put an article on the town warrant. I get a little agitated in the springtime, when individuals that, quote, report to the board through various structures underneath us, are going out and asking to buy all kinds of different things, and that, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but, you know, we have to be careful how we spend our money. And each department head looks at it from their perspective, and they make a great case for why they need it for their department. But when each one of them has the opportunity to throw the ballots or questions on the warrant, without coming to us, who has to look at the whole picture, all of a sudden, we've got a ballooned warrant, and pretty soon, a balloon tax bill, because, you know, the arguments are all made very well, but when you get into town meeting, you know, sometimes it can become a spending frenzy. So, I'm just very concerned that structurally, when it comes to the warrant, that those departments that report to us, and the other boards in town that are duly elected as well, that the approval process has to go through that elected body. That would change a lot in terms of how many articles and what kind of money we're spending.
I mean, they do have to go to appropriations with it, and sometimes appropriations disapproval is kind of a kiss of death, because it carries a lot of weight, but it doesn't absolutely include it from getting, it can still get passed, that's right.
I remember Mr. Eldred standing up a couple of times, saying, we voted against this, and boom, it passed unanimously, so, you know. Okay, anything else? Because we've got some other business to attend to, I think there's some good feedback here tonight, but we probably should do this another time or two, right?
You know, I think we, we certainly can. I know that, and I'm going to look to Pam, you know, I think that by the end of the summer, you know, we'd like to start having more broad public forums, and we'd like to get all the input from the various departments and committees first. Are we still getting input and having meetings with other departments?
We're done.
Yeah, we're done. So, 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 we're waiting on us.
Waiting on us, okay. So, us just gave some information. I think it would be a good idea, though, perhaps, if Mr. Camalo and his team could, could organize these thoughts, as well as others we've had in the past, Mr. Camalo, and your experiences in the past, into one document of input from the Board of Selectmen that we could review at a meeting, an upcoming meeting, and then present that to you? Does that make sense?
That's fine.
Does that work? Does that work for you, Mr. Camalo?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I think I can collaborate with Mr. Sestari.
I'm sorry?
I can work together with Mr. Sestari.
Okay.
I'm, I'm trying to push the Chair into meetings with more spacing between each other for the summer, anyway, so.
That chair.
That chair.
Got you. I'm okay with space.
She drives hard. Sometimes it's, you know, okay, you know, I know this is our fourth meeting this month, but we're going to get through this.
Okay. Mrs. Wright?
Just, I don't know if this is for the Charter or for just this board, but I'd like to find a way that we can at least have the public feel that they have a little more information slash input into the budget process as it's developed. I know this year, there were some individuals at town meeting that wanted to kind of start picking the budget apart, which, you know, town meeting's not the place to do that, and maybe that'll always happen occasionally. There was a question at the debates about specific parts of the budget. The way it's put together, there are clearly major players that put the pieces together. And I don't know how you do it efficiently, but if there would be a way that at a certain point, a certain draft could be presented for a public hearing, just to get input and questions, so I, I've heard this repeatedly from feeling, from people, that they feel like, they get to town meeting, and there's this giant budget that's dumped on them, and it's either a or nay, and just exploring a way that the public can feel some more engagement or input into the budget process, instead of just town meeting, yes or no.
I, I guess I'd like to make a comment on that. And, you know, there, there is, as you'll see as we're going through it in the coming eight months, ten months, there is a fairly well-defined calendar, you know, with hard and fast dates that certain things need to happen. And because, and, and that was created in the Charter back in 2006. So, right now, the Town Manager and, and our board and previous boards, we follow the calendar because we have to. We don't have discretion on that. And oftentimes, the, the deadline for one step is required to initiate the next step, and then it's such a tight timeframe between the two, that we'll have our meetings, and it may be that from when Mr. Camalo is able to take the school department budget, and his portion of the budget, and bring them together, we might have a period of, I think, three weeks to, to actually approve everything and hand it off to appropriations. And in that three weeks, we try to have, you know, at least two, if not three, meetings where we can look at it, try to digest it, make some, you know, quick and usually somewhat high-level suggestions or requests for information, and then we come back and we look at it once more, make some fun, a little bit more refinements, and then, and then it's usually on the eve of, you know, when the deadline is, to hand it off to appropriations, that we're saying, all right, you know, this is, you know, we got to vote on it tonight, and we got to pass it off. So, so the deadlines are really tight, and certainly, all of our meetings are open to the public to come in and to listen. As Mr. Herr mentioned earlier, there's not always a time to comment, but, you know, we do try to open ourselves to comment, you know, for, certainly for issues like that, and, but we need to contain them. So, it's not always easy, and, and something like this, where we're addressing the Charter and possible augmentations to the budget calendar, you know, that would be, I think, our only opportunity to, to really broaden things much more. But I'm not always the most imaginative person either when it comes to this stuff, so.
Okay, with that, if we could, please, let's compile that list of ideas that we've discussed in the past, that you've seen in the past, we've discussed this evening, and perhaps some others, and we'll get that through this board to the Charter Review Committee. Okay?
Okay.
Everybody go with that? Okay, if we could move on, then we'll continue our public hearing now, which we opened at 8:00 PM to discuss and set the water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2017. Mr. Westerling and his support team, as well as folks from the Abrams Group, are here to make a presentation. So, we'll keep the public hearing rolling now, or get it rolling by going to Mr., do you want to go to Mr. Camalo first, and then Mr. Camalo can introduce our guests?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. By way of introduction, this, the setting of water and sewer rates is before the Selectmen because of the Special Act. The Special Act authorizes the Board of Selectmen to set the water and sewer rates. This is a process that happens annually. Also, in terms of process, I believe this is one of the most labor-intensive processes other than the budget that we go through staff. It's a process that involves the water and sewer departments, the Director, the Manager, Eric Curry, the finance team, as well as our consultants, the Abrahams Group. And I will tell you that this year, this process was much more smoother because of a couple of things. One, the investment that the town has made in terms of improving our financial software capabilities. And then, secondly, I think it's the years of training going through this project, or this program over the years, I think has built some depth in terms of our institutional capacity. And then, thirdly, it may not be obvious, but the link between this process and, and the bright, and the budget, that is already approved at town meeting, is very important. I, I think what you'll hear from us, and from the consultants tonight, is an attempt to make sure that, that, that message is, is said loud and clear. And then, finally, it's helpful for the board to look at this discussion in terms of assessing how the water and sewer enterprises perform as a business. Some of you may not have the background, but we did meet informally with the new members of the board, just to explain some of the capital, the long-term capital planning that has gone into the, the sewer enterprise projects, as well as the work that we're currently undertaking with regards to, with regards to the water department. So, the, the discussion tonight is based on the Special Act that establishes the Board of Selectmen as the authority for setting the water and sewer rates, that's done every year. And secondly, we also have a very strong interest in linking this discussion to the budget that is set for the water and sewer enterprises. Granted, that budget is already in place. And then, most importantly, we are always very interested in hearing the board's comments relative to how the water and sewer enterprises perform as a business. By way of introduction, Eric Curry, water and sewer manager, John Westerling, your Director of Public Works, Mait Abrahams from the Abrahams Group, is the consultant who's been helping us putting together the workbooks that were shared with the board.
Okay, just one other thing, if I could just add on to that for perhaps- Okay, just one other thing, if I could just add on to that for perhaps our new colleagues. We're about to see a bunch of numbers and a bunch of different assumptions and a few other factors. We could get really deep into the water here and the weeds very quickly. They're gonna present basically two or three options at the end of all this, and those two or three options are gonna roll up because of the math, and there's not gonna be a whole lot we can do sort of in between that. So, I'd encourage us to, this is my ninth time, I think, going through this, or eighth time about going, about to go through this. It gets a little heavy, but if you just kind of hang in there till the end, then the options become fairly clear, and then we make a decision. It's pretty straightforward when we get to that point, so I wouldn't deep, hyperventilate too quickly here with some of the stuff that they're about to share with us.
I've already spent an hour or two with these guys going over something similar.
Okay.
So, I'm a little bit brought up.
Good. Excellent. So, with that, please, go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Matt Abrahams here from the Abrahams Group to show you the results of our water and sewer rate study. As Mr. Camallo mentioned earlier, this was a collaboration between many town departments, as well as my father, Mark Abrahams, and myself. As we've done in recent years in the past, we analyzed each of the next five fiscal years looking outward, so that would include fiscal years 17 through fiscal years '21. Additionally, we also took a look at the current fiscal year and the impact that it would have on the Water Enterprise Fund and on the Sewer Enterprise Fund as well. And our work can be found in two, in a few different files. Two of them are Excel workbooks, some of which I believe that you have seen recently. We also had a report that we produced that summarized everything at a little bit of a higher level, and we also have some slides to show you this evening, and we will walk through those now. We're gonna start with water. In the top table, what we tried to do is two things here. We wanted to show you the projections for revenues in the top compared to the projections for expenditures, and any difference between the two. So, if there was an excess or a surplus, you would see a positive number in the third row down. If there is a deficiency or a deficit, you would see a negative number there, and we see a negative number for each of the fiscal years that we're looking at. In addition to that, the bottom part of the table is something that we call a retained earnings summary, or retained earnings tracker, where we take the most recent, the retained earnings from the most recently completed fiscal year, which was FY '15, and track it using the projections that we have all the way out through each of the years we're looking at. And part of the goal with the rate setting that we're looking at involves retained earnings and trying to possibly target a certain amount, but at least make sure that they're looking healthy in a given year. So, the projections here, they look similar to those that we presented last year. If we look at the deficits in each of the years, FY '17, we have the small deficit there, but the deficits get larger as we go outward towards FY '21. Commitments are up each of the last three years. And in this analysis, we've also considered the additional properties that will be coming online or have come online recently, so that includes legacy farms and mews. So, we've accounted for both the consumption, the connections, because there is revenue associated with connections for each of these, for some of these properties, and also user charges revenues as well. All the projections that you see here include all the capital items that are planned right now. So, the way that we do that is we take a look at the capital plan, which extends out a few years, and we create borrowings schedules that would mimic what the town would do to take out borrowings for these items. And that, all that information is accounted for in our numbers for water. Retained earnings at the end of FY '15 is $24,000. You see that here, about $24,000. But there's a projected large surplus for FY '16, which you see one line down, just under $1.3 million, mainly aided through large connection fee revenue that the town just recently realized for the muse properties. Other water notes. The town is at capacity. Any new connections need to be provided from future unbilled capacity. Plans for an additional $11.3 million water supply, standpipes, pipeline, and well-filled improvements to be paid primarily by new users. With these plans, which is the capital plan that we talked about earlier and the borrowings that we've projected, new debt service will peak in FY '20 and FY '21 and decrease from there. New users will provide additional connection fee and user charges revenues, and rate increases will be needed going forward. Quick summary, some more build points, summary level. Sensitivity points, legacy farms and other developments build out materializes. We've assumed that in our analysis. 600 residential units to be added over the next five years. New water connections, except for legacy farms, all pay the water connection fee. Some decision points. The last two fiscal years, water rates were increased by 2%. We are recommending a rate increase for FY '17 as part of a plan to ensure a positive retained earnings balance over the next five fiscal years, and that plan may need to be adjusted in future years. So, we strongly recommend that it's looked at on a yearly basis. And here come the options. Option one, no action, the do-nothing scenario. If there are no changes in rates, we are projecting retained earnings at the end of FY '17 to be about $1.1 million, which is a strong number, about 53% of the budget. However, due to the shortfalls, the deficits that we were looking at on one of the previous screens, retained earnings can only cover those up to a certain point. We're projecting that it would be depleted by 2019 without any further increases. And if there was no action, we included the retained earnings balance projections for each, for the fiscal years here, so 2020, a negative amount of just under $300,000, 2021, a much larger amount. Option two, 2% rate increase. We focus on 2% because that was the increase that was authorized each of the last two fiscal years. So, we wanted to include a little table to show the impact on users' bills, and those numbers represent per-bill impact. So, users in town receive two bills per year, but those numbers reflect just one of their So, even with a 2% increase in '17, we included that as part of, we did some analysis if that were to be part of a five-year plan at 2% in each of the years, and retained earnings still projected a large negative number under that plan. Option three, we focus on 4.75%. It's the same setup as the previous slide, so you can see the bill impact, per-bill impact for some different user types. And a little bit of a different scenario as we look outward. Now, the numbers at the bottom represent the 4.75 increase in each of the fiscal years. However, we're projecting a positive retained earnings balance at the end of FY '21 under that scenario of about $33,000, or 1% of the budget. So, that's not a large balance for retained earnings, but it is a positive one. Sewer.
Can we, yeah, can we talk about water first?
Sure.
Do water first, and then the sewer.
Sure.
So, we're in a public hearing, so we presented water, we can talk water, last thing, we can put on water in the public. And then we'll go to sewer, so please, go ahead and go with water.
Could you bring up the chart, the spreadsheet on water, please?
This one? Yeah. You mentioned that the numbers are very similar to what you projected and showed us last year. Can you tell me which ones are similar? Because I'm looking at what you showed us last year, and they look very different.
Okay.
You know, I'll just, I'll give you an example. So, last year, when we were doing this, we showed in the top level that the total revenues, requested total revenues and other financial sources were gonna be about $2.6 million. Total expenditures, $1.9 million, and we're projecting, well, we had an excess of $662,000.
Which fiscal year are you looking at?
2016. As we look at projected for 2017, it was total revenues of $2.8 million, expenditures of $2.1 million, with an excess of $645,000. And that's in the positive. And that seems very different from what we're looking at in this chart.
Yes, I can speak to some of that. Last year's projections, we were a little, we projected the connection fee revenues with the information that we had available to us at the time. And we thought that the muse connections would be spread out over multiple years, whereas this year, we learned that that was not the case, and the town actually collected all that revenue in FY '16.
Okay.
Through the chair, just so you'll notice that the projected FY '16 surplus, the 1.293, that's primarily $1.2 million from the muse. They paid all of their connection fees, 180 times $4,000. They paid it all at once.
Okay.
Whereas Matt described, we had projected that those would be spread out over a number of years.
All right. So, I guess if we had known what we know now then, and this is rhetorical, clearly, but, you know, would we, would we have had reason, or would we have made a different decision last year? And, I mean, would we have had reason to? I'm just asking, I'm not sure if it...
Through the chair, I think that in general, what we see here is that we've got capital expenditures, which are raising the amount of our debt, so we've got to cover that over the next several years. So, I think that there would have been an increase recommended anyways. If it would have been 2%, I can't say. I'll look at the numbers a little more closely. It may have been, been a little off from the 2%, but I think that a rate increase would have been required anyway when we look at a five-year plan.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Wright.
Not right now.
Mr. Cuttino.
I'm gonna be the broken record, because it'll be a third time I ask the same one. The water loss due to old meters, and I know that we've always been trying to get that 10% goal. What did we hit last year, not counting new connections, old ones that went out? How much, what percentage did we hit?
Through the chair, if I can answer that, through what we did for meter replacements, we were overwhelmed, and we set up an annual budget for meter replacements. We were overwhelmed with the number of meter replacements, excuse me, the number of new meter requests through legacy farms. So, that took up a lot of our budget. Those areas that we did focus on for meter replacements, we looked at the higher users, the condos up off of School Street. Any other big ones, Eric, that we hit upon? Yeah, absolutely.
What we did is, the time that we did have, we weren't spending, in my 30 years here, the mod of construction that's taken place in this last couple of years is just unbelievable. It's really taken up and brought in a lot of our resources. So, what we did do is target those meters that were older, and the two-inch meters that are not really designed, were put in there way back in the 80s and 90s, that really put, if you have an eight or 10-unit condo, you flush a toilet, it's barely gonna move. So, we targeted those, that was gonna give us our biggest thing for the bucket we were able to place, almost all of those, in a short timeframe. It's gonna make a significant difference in helping out towards this. A lot of, still going towards the goal of trying to get all of the other ones, but we were really targeted that. You know, that's replacing those seven meters, like, quadruple doing a single residential year in terms of the advantage of your block.
Right, but my point is, so now that, so if we didn't hit the 10% last year, and we didn't hit it the year before, so now we're, in order to catch up for this year, we'd get it, we have to do 25, 26% or something like that, you know, and that's lost revenue that we'd be able to be putting up here from lost, lost water. So, you know, has anybody looked into bringing in an outside contractor to pay them to do these changes for us so we don't fall behind? Because we're collecting $4,000 for every new hookup we're doing. And so, you know, whether we pay a new contractor or somebody to do the new ones, or we get somebody, get, bring in people to do the, to make sure we get our 10% or now 20% or 25%, whatever it might be, to catch up. Because if we keep falling behind every single year, hey, that's, you know, half the distance to the goal. You know, we're just getting that same football analogy, you know, and we're not getting up to the revenues that we should be getting. You know, if you're talking about meters that were put in in the 80s, you know, it's, that's, it's, you know, so if, you know, if somebody could just look into that cost, you know, I'm sure that we could recoup it quickly, and then, you know, then just get rid of them as soon as we get to the goal of replacing them all. Because, you know, this is, I brought up two years ago, last year, and I throw it because it's big numbers.
Just for reference, we do test, and a significant amount of the ones that we do pull out and test that are aged are really not as off as one might think, which is, you know, we still obviously want to do that, but it's not a dramatic, you know, 30, 40% difference. Most of them are pretty close to average even after 10, 15 years, which is, you know, bucks, you want to bring all of them to the new system, so that also, you know, helps direct through the whole munis process as well.
Well, 10 or 15 years would have been a 2005 or a 2001, not one from the 80s.
Because the new ones that we're putting in are all, there's no mechanical pots in them, and that's one of the issues with the older meters, they have mechanical pots in, plus all that wear and tear, and the new ones are all magnetic flow, so they're 25 to 25 year life expectancy before they even start to look.
And my last question is, which I actually started with, is what is our, what is our loss right now?
So, your first question leads, through the chair, your first question leads to the second question, which is non-revenue water. And that's meters that are reading less than they should be, that is leaks, that is water that isn't metered through illicit connections or what have you, and we've got, the good news story is that we've brought that from the low 20s. Last year, it was down to just over...
We were at 29 three, four years ago.
So, four years ago. We've brought it from the 20s down to, last year was...
17.
17, and this, the year before that was?
Quite right, 18 or 19.
Yeah, so we've continued to decrease that non-revenue water. We were at 17 last calendar year, and we just found three major leaks, which account for about 2%. So, we're hitting that goal of 15%. We may not be able to reach that by 10% meter replacement every year, but the non-revenue water, we are driving that down through other leak detection and through the transfer to the munis billing system was big because it helped to reconcile a lot of accounts.
How about, how about volume-wise, the decrease? Because as, obviously, as we're hooking up more meters, that means we're bringing our top line up, so if we keep the leaks the same and raise the top line, then our percentage leaks are going down.
Good.
So, are we, are we changing the volume of non-revenue water?
Excellent question. What's up?
That was a really good question.
Wow. It's the math major in me.
Does that change what we have to decide?
You can come back with an answer, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're happy to provide, through the chair, we're happy to provide the board with a summary of what we have replaced for meters and what we've installed for meters. It doesn't change where we are this evening. It doesn't change the fact of revenues versus expenditures.
This is my only time to ask, though.
No, I understand, and it's an excellent question, and it's all non-revenue water. Why would we want to increase rates if we can't control the non-revenue water? And we're bringing it to very close to the goal of the DEP establishes.
Okay, Mr. Tedstone.
I brought this up when we went over this before, and it's just kind of lingered in my head. The $4,000 connection fee that we have, I built, I had a small subdivision that I built myself about 10 years ago. I spent $4,000 to connect there. Why don't, with all the construction going on, is there a reason why we don't look at this and say... this and say, why isn't it $8,000? Because I don't know any developer, if they're going to build an $800,000 house, $600,000 house, they're going to balk at Dublin. They're not going to not build a house in town and instead of charging 799, charge 803, add an additional $4,000 to the connection and have that go into this. I don't know, I'd like to know why we were stuck on the $4,000. And if it's because we're looking at our, the surrounding towns around us that are doing it $4,000, why aren't we looking at Wellesley, Weston, Dover, Sherburne?
I think, I think from a legal standpoint, you have to have the cost justification and you can't make a profit on it. It's, you know, what, what's it costing us? And, and, you know, again, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I find it hard to believe that 10 years later, that it was $4,000 back then and it's $4,000.
I think it was back then, they were ripping you off.
I have no problem taking a rebate on that, getting a reimbursement.
In fact, we can, go ahead.
Now, through the chair, we had the Abrahams group, they did a review of our water entry fees. And they followed the American Waterworks Association guidelines. And that looks at a lot of things. It looks at the cost for the department, it looks at the cost of future water supply, it looks at the cost of capital improvements. And, long story short, we came down to the fact that the $4,000 is about appropriate for what, what we're looking at. I'm happy to share that with the new members of the board, the findings, and that was reviewed with the Board of Selectmen last year about this time.
Okay. So, water. Everybody good on water? We've got a lot more to cover here. Mrs. Wright.
Can I just ask one clarification on Mr. Abrams? Underwater notes, it says the town, number one, the town is at capacity, new connections for approved and planned project lists will need to be provided from future unbuilt capacity. I'm not sure what project lists are. Are you talking about approved and planned projects that the planning board has approved, where they have been told, the applicant has been told that they can have water in sewer? Or, I'm not sure what project lists are.
Through the chair, that's an excellent question. We do have 1.21 million gallons per day is what we can pump from our sources, according to our Water Management Act permit. And that covers basically the developments that we have ongoing today. Future projects will exceed that 1.21 million gallons per day. And that's what we've asked for in our next Water Management Act permit, which we have already applied for. It shows that 1.21 million gallons increasing to 1.4. So, as, as that increases and as we're challenged to supply that water, especially in the summertime when those peak demands are, are hit, that's why an interconnection for Ashland or the MWRA was so important for us, so that we can meet that demand.
So, then, through you, Mr. Chair. Am I understanding correctly that there are projects that were approved by the planning board? The applicant was told they could have water in sewer? And now, this is saying that there actually is not the water and sewer capacity to provide them until there is, well, this says it'll have to be provided from future unbuilt capacity. So, have we made promises that now we don't have the supply for?
Through the chair, I wouldn't say that we've made promises, but if you look at the MUSE agreement...
Right.
...that they signed with the town, they had to provide $25,000 to the town to help us permit and find new water supplies. So, everyone has been understanding the fact that we're close, we've written that into our permit agreements, our approvals for, for subdivisions. So, we're at maximum capacity, especially during summertime.
So, just to clarify, if every single thing that's been permitted was built today, there wouldn't be enough water to supply it?
I think that would put us right at that 1.2 million gallons permitted. But then it becomes a problem for Mr. Carty and his team to be able to pump that out of the ground.
Right.
Especially during drought periods. So, we believe that we're, our permitted withdrawal, 1.21 million gallons per day, can satisfy those projects on a permitted level. It's a matter of getting it out of the ground. It's a matter of Ashland being able to supply it to us when the demand is high. But the supply in Ashland, they also suffer the same problems with their aquifers going down as there are droughts. And they can't supply to us even the minimum amount of 300,000 gallons per day. They, they bring theirs down to, two years ago, it was 130,000 gallons per day. So, that's why we're permitted, but it's a problem of trying to meet that permit level, especially during drought periods.
Okay. So...
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
But, Mr. Westphal, he was mentioning the agreement with Ashland, and now we are revising that agreement with Ashland based on our recent town meeting vote. And does that, does that change the landscape for us at all?
Through the chair, that would dramatically improve the landscape. Because what will occur is Ashland will have an interconnection with MWRA. When we go to Ashland and we say, this is our peak period, we've got all these projects, we need to pump more water, we can't meet that, please, Ashland, you get your water supply from MWRA and give us the water supply coming out of your aquifer. That allows that to happen, then they can supply up to the million gallons per day. We wouldn't need that on, on our peak days, but they're able to then provide what we would need. So, if Eric can't pump it out of the ground, we just open this bigot to Ashland.
And what's the, what's the timeline to all of that being a reality?
We're still in the design phase.
Ballpark. Two years, three years?
It's always a long process.
Several years.
Yeah.
Chair, I think that if, if Ashland votes it and they start charging ahead, I think that we're looking at two years' time.
Okay. Thank you.
Bless you.
Sorry, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. Water. So, we've got some great information from the DPW folks and their consultant. We've got three options in front of us on water. I personally am inclined to go 2%. The impact to the average rate payer is minimal, very minimal, but it's, I don't like the idea of just, in the past, I've always said, "No." Right, John? I've said, "No rate increase."
Sir.
Uh, no. But 2% and the numbers we're talking about here in terms of an increase to the average rate payer, I think it's manageable for everybody, and it doesn't put us in, it does not put us in a hole going forward. If we stated current numbers, we would find ourselves in a hole here in a couple of years. So, I'm thinking 2%, 4.75, I think's nice to have, but I don't think we need it. So, that's my thought, just to get this going. If that's, does anyone else have any other thoughts or want to do something different?
I think 2% is very manageable. When I think about people with fixed incomes in town, I think that the average, I think when we talked about it, the average was about $5 a year. And I think a lot of the, like, the elderly and, and people like that, they'll use less than, than that, and I'm fine with that.
Okay. Everybody else okay? So, we won't vote this now, but I just wanted to kind of, so we can wrap up water.
Yep.
Okay? Unless someone wants to say something else. Let's, actually, though, because we're in a public hearing, let's see if there's any in public input on water, specific to water. Seeing none, we'll move ahead. Okay, let's talk sewer now, please.
Similar slide to what you saw when we kicked off the water discussion. One big difference being the retain earnings balanced the last certified amount of just over $2 million. So, retain earnings-wise, much different scenario than water. However, if we focus on, I think we just lost that. If we focus on the deficit line, the third line down, the deficits are a little bit larger going outward in each of the fiscal years that we're, thanks, that we're looking at. That's a little bit of a different story with water. So, in the do-nothing scenario, as you'll see, when we get there, retain earnings gets depleted a year earlier than we were showing for water, FY18. Projections similar to those presented last year. Submitted FY17 budget includes $558,000 in retain earnings to balance the budget. See the large shortfalls in each of the five fiscal years? Commitments are up from last year after a slight decline the prior year. Debt service peaks in FY16 and steadily declines. That's debt service that is currently on the books. Projections do not include future capital needs. So, this is a, a difference when we look at, when we compare to water. Water, we were able to analyze a full capital plan over the next few years and include projections associated with borrowings related to that plan. Whereas with sewer, there is no, there is not a similar plan in place, not yet. It's being worked on as we speak. So, therefore, the projections that we show you tonight do not include capital, large capital expenditures, looking outward a few years. And there may be a capital plan in place in the near future that will strongly recommend large capital purchases. So, please keep that in mind as we go forward.
Great, Mr. Chairman. Just to back up what Matt is saying, provide a little more information. Recall, the town meeting appropriated $140,000 to do a sewer capacity analysis and a business plan. That will look at where we can expand sewers, how much sewer we can provide, and a business plan to make a financial statement.
Okay. Thank you, John.
As already mentioned, retain earnings can carry the sewer fund, but only through FY18, even that large amount. Other notes, the town is at capacity for sewer. Additional water system growth will result in additional sewer flow to be treated. The last CWMP was completed in 2004 and is being updated, as we just mentioned. The sewer fund has a shortfall that will need to be addressed. Sensitivity points, or points. Additional sewer capacity is needed, but only at a reasonable price. Sewer decision points, last year's sewer rates were increased by 3.75% as part of a multi-year plan to balance the sewer fund. And we reviewed the rates just prior, and we believe that sewer rates increased 2% in the prior fiscal year in FY, going into FY15. Just like with water, a rate increase is recommended for FY17 as part of a plan to balance the sewer fund over the next five years. And it may need to be adjusted in future years. Just like with water, we strongly recommend monitoring the sewer fund and its finances on an annual basis and whether rate increases are necessary. So, just like with water, we're presenting three options. The first option, just like water, is the do-nothing or no-action scenario. With no changes in rates, we're projecting retain earnings at the end of FY17 to be just under $1 million, or about 30% of the budget. As already mentioned, retain earnings can, can cover projected shortfalls, excuse me, through FY18, but not beyond that. And we show, we provided some projected retain earnings executive balances for the three fiscal years after that. Option two, representing a 3.75% rate increase in the impact on the same user base that we were looking at for water. We're providing, we're presenting 3.75% increase because that's the one that was selected last year as part of a multi-year plan. And if the 3.75% increase were to take place in each of the five, each of the next five fiscal years, you're looking at a small retain earnings projected negative balance. And option three, 4.75, would be the rate increase. The impact on the same user base is presented in the table. And the projections, if 4.75% were to be authorized in each of the next five years, we're looking at a retained earnings balance of about $129,000, or 5% of the budget, and the fund would be fully balanced by FY21. And that concludes our presentation on sewer.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's start with Mr. Cutino.
Well, my question's coming back down. If you go back to the, the other, other points, the other sewer notes. I could have sworn last year, we were told that we were going to update the CWMP, and now it's, that we were, we just got negotiations on that. That's, has it not been updated?
So, through the chair, that's, that's the $140,000 that I mentioned, the town meeting appropriated. The engineers are currently looking at an analysis of all the connected properties. They're looking at the entire sewer infrastructure, the pipe sizes, the slopes, finding where the shortfalls are, where the limitations are, which will then tell us where development can or cannot occur, what upgrades are necessary. So, it's ongoing work. We're looking for a report this year.
Excellent. Because, you know, because right now, we're, we're telling the rest of the world that we don't have water and we don't have sewer. And so, you know, that's really not a very good thing to be telling, telling the world that sewer, so we're saying that, that we're a vibrant welcoming community to, to businesses and, and development and whatnot, but now we're saying, but there's no water, no sewer. So, we've got to really look ahead and make sure that we do have capacity in order to be marketable in the...
Through the chair, your, your, your point is well, well-taken and it's well-made. We're at capacity for water when we look at our maximum permitted amount. That's why we're requesting through the state an increase in that amount. We are at sewer capacity for major projects. Witness the development of the MUSE. They had to put in their own sewage treatment facility because we just couldn't take on another 280 units. When they were looking at developing the Parkwood property, we had to tell them, we can't, we can't take on an additional millions of gallons. So, for, for the large projects, yes, we are, and that's why we work with developers to find other onsite options. There are other options that we do have, such as building out the Fruit Street Treatment Facility. That's currently only built for 100,000 gallons per day. It can be expanded to 350,000 gallons per day. And that's an opportunity where if a developer comes in, we can work with them to build that capacity with the developer's help in expending that cost. So, although we are reaching our maximums, we do have some capacity in there, but we also have options for expanding that capacity.
Mr. Tedstone.
I'm good.
I'll sit.
Mrs. Wright.
So, my same question on the sewer. When you say we're at capacity for sewer, included in that capacity are already permitted projects?
Through the chair, that's correct. And remember, Legacy Farms, they built their own treatment facility. The MUSE has built their own treatment facility.
Right.
What other ones are on sewer that are currently adding?
Septic systems for the North Ponge.
Yeah, so...
Davenport.
But, but, but my question is, anything that has been permitted, any plans that have been approved by the planning board that are not yet built, if they were promised sewer, within that at capacity, they are included in that?
And that's, through the chair, that's what was, goes into that statement of we're at capacity, because we know who's building sewers, what the flow will be. There's, there's, there is a small amount of room in there, but we're, for all intents and purposes, we're at capacity. We can't take on a MUSE, we can't take on a Parkwood Drive without expanding our capacity. There's room to expand, there are plans to expand, but that has to be borne into the cost by, by potential developers coming forward.
I'll sit.
Yep.
Mr. Sturridge.
Yeah, I guess, you know, just to comment on, on the growth component, I'm going to summon my, my inner Mr. Mosher. And one of the things that he always harped on was the planning component of this. And, you know, we often, we often look at different components of growth and try to assign, you know, fees and costs and things of that nature. And, you know, we look and we say, "Okay, a water connection is $4,000 and sewer is this." But then there's always that, there's always that one that tips the scale and causes us to have to expand the wastewater treatment facility or find a new well or a new water source somewhere else and things of that nature. Now, all of a sudden, that connection isn't costing us $4,000, it's costing us a couple million dollars. And sure, it expands our ability for, for further growth, but then there's also the question of, do you want to keep growing? So, you know, when I look at this stuff, you know, I appreciate the fact that we're coming up on, on our current limitations and our current capacities. I can appreciate Mr. Cutino's comments about it's difficult to really consider the town as marketable for expansion. And, you know, on the one hand, you could say, "Well, we need to address it so that we can maintain marketability." On the other hand, you can say, "Well, we need to keep an eye on this and make sure that we're not approving projects that go beyond our current capacity, because we don't want to spend millions more dollars to, to expand our infrastructure." So, it's just some food for thought, I guess, for our board, for the planning board, and, you know, any other boards and committees that are involved in these different processes.
Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? So we all good as far as our thoughts on sewer? Anyone from the public want to comment on the sewer piece of the puzzle here? Okay. So seeing none, just one quick comment on sewer, from my perspective, anyway. We've got a lot going on in town with the schools and the DPW facility, and the library, and several other private ventures. An awful lot of construction is coming our way, and will continue for several years. We're going to talk about trash and recycling program here in a few minutes. If there is a topic that will get the passions of Hopkinton stirred even further than some of the ones that we have in front of us now, it is sewer and expanding sewer capacity in town. The Fruit Street expansion up to 300,000 gallons per minute, while it sounds like, you know, we've got a place that's ready for it and we can do it like that, it is years in the making, and it is a significant lift in terms of the local politics in town, if you will, as well as the approvals at the state, local and state level. So sewer is going to be a challenge for us going forward. All the new projects are doing their own thing. To your point, you know, it's hard to welcome people to town when we don't have it, but people are coming to town and providing their own. So it can still, we can work around it. There's a workaround. Yes, it's a little bit more expensive, but I think that's a lot easier, frankly, than trying to go to Fruit Street and go up to another 200,000 gallons per day, or build another plant somewhere.
Welcome to town, please don't flush.
Yeah. It's just, I think it's a big lift right now in the community with everything else that we have going on. So I, as one, would not be inclined to want to go down that path or anytime soon. But I'm just one. So that said, though, specific to the question in front of us, no public input on sewer. We've got our input on water. We've had our dialogue with the team here. I would suggest that we provide a motion to close the public hearing for the water and sewer rates discussion for FY17.
So moved.
Second. So we have a motion and a second on the table to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll go ahead. The public hearing portion of this discussion is now closed, and the board can deliberate the two questions in front of us, which is the water and sewer rate for FY17, as well as the sewer rate for FY17. I think we had a consensus earlier about a 2% increase for water, so if someone's inclined to make a motion.
I'd actually like to ask another question on water.
Okay. Can we do the, you want to do the motion first?
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Or do you want to do the questions because it might impact the motion?
I'm not going to make the motion, so.
Okay. Mrs. Wright.
I do have comment on that, both of these. I understand we don't want to spend more money, and the taxpayers don't want any more costs. And I also understand that in the next year or so, we're going to have a tremendously big hit for all the spending that was approved. So, you know, the next year or two is going to be, we're going to really feel it. So I understand wanting to keep everything down. But looking at this as a business, you know, we've got two enterprises where the expenses are exceeding the income. And, you know, I'm really not comfortable with kicking the can down the road. You look at what the numbers are of delaying this. I don't know whether it's fiscally responsible for a long-term financial planning for the town to keep avoiding paying a piper that we're not bringing in the right amount of money to cover our costs. Whether we should look at a slightly larger increase? I mean, it's more palatable to everybody to say, oh, we don't want to spend as much, but down the road, it doesn't seem to be particularly responsible.
Okay, I'm not clear what's your.
This often, yeah, this often, Ms. Wright, it ends up kind of like steering a boat. You know, you start turning the wheel, and then, you know, you see, okay, well, we've overcompensated a little bit in this direction, now we need to compensate in the other direction. And so it's a little bit, you know, you try to find that rum line, and you stick to it. But, you know, you can see from the water, we're, you know, right now, we're not currently at a deficit on the water side. But we've got projects coming up over the next couple of years, and this is actually going to be my question, and forgive me if you've already answered it in the presentation. But, you know, we're currently at a $1.1 million surplus, and if we don't raise rates, then in five years, we're going to be at $971,000 deficit. And I'm just, again, forgive me if you already answered this question, but there's a $2 million gap there. What's happening for $2 million? Is this the water tower replacement? Is it other projects? Is it, you know, what's going on there that's going to soak that up?
Chair, if you look at the million dollars that we have now, that was a windfall, basically, from the Muse, and them paying their fees, so that brought us up. What will bring down our retained earnings are all the capital projects which we've approved, previously approved, and just recently approved, which is also previous, but more short-term. If you look at the water tower, if you look at the million dollars for the Ashland source of supply, this also projects out capital expenditures moving forward. So there's a million dollars for pipe improvements to improve the water flow from Ashland. We're looking at reducing iron and manganese through a biofilter over Wells 4 and 5, the Whitehall Wells. So that will come with a component for treatment of that water. So it's all of those capital projects and equipment moving forward.
Okay, thanks. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take away from your question. I was trying to answer it if anybody else has any comments to that. I apologize.
Okay, so back to the question at hand. We have a presentation and three options for the water rate for FY17. Does anybody want to make a motion specific to what they'd like to see happen with the rate for FY17?
I'd make a motion to raise the rates 2%.
For water?
For water.
For FY17. Okay. I think the motion's in order. Is there a second?
Awesome. My first motion, not second.
I'll second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Discussion on a 2% increase for water.
I just think we're going to have to realize that we can do 2% now, but eventually, it's, we're going to have to pay the piper. You know, there has not been a 3.0 or 3.75 option listed, something maybe in the middle. But, you know, I'm all for keeping it low, but we can only delay it for so long. We'll have to bite the bullet a little harder if we don't increase it now.
I think if we stayed flat and didn't increase at all, that would be kicking it down the road a little bit. But at 2%, we're taking a step to be healthy going forward, but we're not going all the way. Dollar-wise, we're splitting hairs here, it's pennies, you know, through the average rate payer over the course of a year. But I think there's a message in it, too, that, you know, we don't want to take more than we really need in a fiscal year. I mean, that's one of my fundamentals that I try to work under. So that's why I support the 2% as opposed to a little bit higher number. Any other thoughts?
Well, I originally, at least while I held up on the second, was because of the small amounts, and as Sullivan Wright was just talking about, that as much as it's doing nothing is kicking the can down the road. But by, you know, putting it off, putting it off, putting it off, that maybe, you know, looking at, even though it was 2, 3.75, and what, 4?
For water.
4.75 was the next one?
Yes. 2 and 4.75, I believe.
Right. So one completely pays it off, and to Mrs. Stary's comment, you know, you don't want to overcompensate and really hit people in one year, because they'll be 4.75, 4.75, 4.75. But, you know, what will make us more solvent, and what's, you know, what's the difference between solvent and prudent?
Well, yeah, and I guess I'd also look at, you know, where your eye gets drawn to is, okay, where are we now? And if we use X percent, whether it's 0, 2, 5, whatever, you know, where are we going to be in five years? Well, that five-year projection is what's been given to us. You know, they could have just as easily given us a seven-year projection or a 10-year projection, and then we'd be looking at that and saying, oh, okay, well, we should be trying to get that to zero, or maybe a little bit on the positive side in seven years or 10 years. This is something that we adjust every year. So if we start seeing ourselves going off course, you know, then we can make another micro adjustment or a major, you know, hopefully not a major adjustment, but we can make further adjustments as we're getting closer. The other comment I would have is that, you know, again, these are five-year projections. You know, it's not necessarily reality, and we won't know what reality is until it's, you know, yesterday. So, you know, we just keep trying to keep it steady, in my opinion, without shocking the rate payers too much.
Okay.
One, is there any way to deflect some of the costs that we're absorbing here, the debt that we're absorbing, onto the contractors? Making it so they're, the onus is, like, I know that I brought up that $4,000 connection fee, and I guess we're tied, you know, by the state, but are there more fees, something that we can put? Like, it doesn't bother me if I see a developer not drive through in a Range Rover, they have to drive an Expedition.
Most of the projects in town have some form of mitigation that comes with the approval process that would require that they, it's not the 4,000, it would require, you know, for example, streets, $400,000 worth of road repairs, or if they need sewer, they've got to build their own plant, or if they want water from the town, they got to help us upgrade some motors and certain pump stations. So those types of negotiations do take place as part of the approval process when it goes through planning and other entities in town.
Also through the chair, witness what we did with the Muse approval. We received not only the $1.2 million in the fees, but also $25,000 towards finding new sources of water. And we just worked with the planning board. It used to be Mr. Cardy's Water and Sewer Forces that would go out and have to inspect the utilities, which took them away from other work, like replacing meters. But that is now going to be handled by the planning board's inspectional services through their engineer. So we are making inroads towards relieving staff, taking some of the burden off of the town, and looking for financial resources to help us find these new sources of supply.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second for a 2% water increase for FY17. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, and so carries a 2%. But that's for the water rate. Next up, sewer rate. Mr. Abrams, if you could be so kind and put the sewer rate options, there was nothing, 3.75 and 4.75. So again, similar kind of scenario, and I think similar discussion. I don't think doing nothing is prudent, to Mrs. Wright's point a few minutes ago. We've got to be thinking down the road a little bit. 4.75% rate increase on a more expensive bill for the rate payer, I think, is a bit much. So I'm inclined to look at that 3.75 from my seat, anyway.
Fine as well.
Through the chair, may I provide a little perspective on what we're looking at on the sewer side?
Didn't we already do that?
Well, it's worth, we did, so I will.
No, if you've got something new and exciting, different report, please do.
I do, and it goes back to what Selectman Catino had mentioned about capacity. Part of the problem here, and the reasons that the deficits are so much greater in the sewer side than the water side, is the fact that we've built capacity, we've built infrastructure, and we've got somewhere in some of the sections, only 50% of the people connected. So building capacity is expensive. So to build it, to have it, to attract developers, is expensive. We've done that in the past. We built the Fruit Street facility, which was $10 million. Some of our phases only have 50% of the folks connected. So that's, that should, I wanted to shed a little more perspective on why we're looking at the deficits moving forward, and why the increases are greater than water, to a magnitude of double.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Westerling, is there a fee associated with? I know that there's betterments, but is there also, like, we have the connection fee for water, is there a connection fee for sewer that comes to us, or is it strictly through the betterment?
Through the chair, there is, and that amount is.
It's just a permanent fee.
Okay, okay.
The betterment is basically the connection.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion on the sewer rate?
I will make a motion to raise the sewer rates 3.75%.
I'll second you.
For FY17. Okay? So we have a motion and a second for FY17, 3.75% for sewer. Any discussion?
And so, just to clarify it for the people that are watching at home, it's like, if you're the average user in town, it's $25, $25 to $26 a year. So it's, it's a good way to chip away some of the red, but it's not going to, hopefully not going to break the bank for everybody.
Okay. Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so it's unanimous, and so carries. Sewer rate will increase 3.75% for FY17. Mr. Kamala.
Again, I want to thank the board for another very thoughtful discussion. I think there are some interesting points that we, as staff, need to follow upon. We heard your comments. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the teams that worked on this project. Finance team did some heavy lifting. Abraham's group, great job. John, Eric, and your teams, this would not have been possible without your fantastic effort.
Completely agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Westerling is going to continue to stay with us for a few minutes here. Next up on our agenda, and other than a couple administrative things, last up on our agenda this evening, we have a solid waste and recycling contract renewal discussion So we talked, so in the past, the Board of Selectmen with different members have talked about the situation with E.L. Harvey &amp; Sons. Mr. Kamala, do you have something?
Yes, I will, shortly.
Okay, all right. So in the past, we've talked with, as a board, about the trash and recycling program and the contract that was in place with the E.L. Harvey &amp; Sons, and how that is up for renewal on, or expires on June 30th, and we need to be ready for a new contract on July 1, on or about. And at that time, the board encouraged Mr. Kamala to continue down a path to try and find some options that the board could consider with E.L. Harvey and their various programs. We've since had an election, and we added two new members to our board, and the discussion is continuing about the trash services and recycling services in town. We talked about it briefly, I think, in our first or second meeting since we reconstituted the board. And then there was a little bit of confusion about some other stuff that was going on in town specific to this. That public forum that Mr. Westerling attended, as our professional staff person leading this effort, was held at HCAM last week on, I believe, I don't recall, it was on Tuesday evening it was. And there, he worked with the HCAM news team to report out to the community, those that were watching, you know, what he's considering and what he's putting forward to the town manager and for the selectmen to consider about the trash and recycling program. I went from our meeting over to that, and sat and watched and listened and learned a great deal about where we are, and also went to the microphone and asked a couple of questions and made a couple of points. The major point I wanted to make was that that evening, last Tuesday evening, was not the public hearing for trash and recycling discussion, that that was not the only time we were going to talk about trash and recycling before we take any vote, and that people would have an opportunity to come before us in the form of a public hearing of sorts to make their voices heard. We've got a lot of emails since then, since that program. I think it did its job, and it stirred some thought and idea in town. And here we are now this evening. The central question, I think, before us tonight is, and I appreciate you bringing all the props for, to really drive home what we're talking about here, I think the central question before us tonight is how are we going to proceed going forward, not what we're going to decide going forward just yet. So we want to have a public hearing. I think everyone agrees that we need to have an opportunity for the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager, and our DPW Director to hear from the public directly. So we have to schedule that. It's not required by law that we have a public hearing for this, but we can do it in that format so that we give people a chance to really come in and voice their concerns openly. format so that we give people a chance to really come in and voice their concerns openly. So I think that's the first thing we have to discuss is, what is the next step to make that happen, Mr. Kamala?
The next step then would be for the board to schedule this issue for discussion at its next meeting, which is June 21st, June 21.
June 21. Okay. The contract expires June 30th.
That is correct.
Is there any wiggle room past that date with the contract that's in place today?
If the board so desires, we as staff can work on that issue.
Okay. So I know we have two members, I believe I know we have two members that may not be available on June 21st, is that correct? Okay, so are you inclined to weigh in on this, or do you just want to leave it to the three of us to decide the fate of trash in Hopkinton?
Are you planning on voting on the 21st, or just having?
I'm asking if you, if you want us to try and extend this.
I'd like to have a say in this, since I've been at all the meetings up to this point. And, yeah, I mean, I'd like to have a say.
I agree.
Okay, so given that fact, that these two gentlemen would like to be in on the 21st, when they can't be in on the 21st, what can we do?
Staff will have a conversation with E.L. Harvey, taking into consideration that the two members will not be available on the 21st.
And that we would need to extend the contract so that we could keep our services in town as they are today until we have such time as we can get everybody together, get the public in here, and have that hearing with everybody present. Can you make that happen?
We...
Dramatic clause.
Yeah.
He's going to talk to Harvey to see if he can make it happen.
No, I can't make that happen.
We as staff will not put the community at risk. We will do whatever is possible to make sure that the service is not put at risk.
Okay. Mrs. Wright?
Mr. Chairman, would it be possible and advisable to still schedule the public hearing for June 21st and have the board vote later when the other members can be present, because they are able to watch the public hearing comment by watching the video? And I do believe that as we get into July, people get away on vacations, it becomes less, it becomes harder for the public to participate. I, I feel that for public input, you'd get, you might get more people able to come in June.
Okay. Mr. Sestari, Mr. Cutino, any thoughts on that suggestion?
I'd still like to be part of the public hearing. Again, I've been, we've been talking about this for six months, and I don't want to miss out on people actually asking the questions and hearing some of the answers given.
What about the idea of watching the presentation, taped HCAM presentation, when you return, or?
I'm amenable to that.
All right. Mr. Tedstone?
Well, I have a, I don't know at what point that I would talk about this, but I've spoken to Mr. Kamala about this, and I've, I've gotten a bunch of feedback from the public. Problem that I have on this entire process is that there's one company presenting three options. I'd like it to go out to, to bid, to have all the trash companies in the area that are interested, put an RFP together, and find a way to maybe save us some money. I know through speaking to Mr. Kamala that Harvey's is amenable to pushing our contract out, keeping the kind of status quo for right now. So for me, and for speaking through a, a bunch of people that I've spoken to, of town residents and voting members, it just doesn't, this whole thing doesn't kind of, if I can just throw a slang term, pass the smell test, that there's only one company that's, that's bid it. And I know that Mr. Kamala and Mr. Westling have done a lot of work on this. But trash, over the last three years, I've spoke to the owner of a, another trash company and, that lives in town, he said that prices have come down, you know, 15 to 25 to 40% over the last three years. And as much as I love seeing these carts and things like that, not speaking for me, speaking for the townspeople, I'd like to see it go out to bid to see if we can, if this $4 million contract can maybe get cut down and save the townspeople a bunch more money.
Okay.
I don't know if this is the time to bring that up or not, and I don't know what the board's thought is on that, but that's, you know...
I think it's the right time, as we're trying to figure out sort of what the process is going to be to address this going forward. Let me ask a question of the town manager. When the previous board met and discussed this, did we vote to continue with E.L. Harvey &amp; Sons, or did we just have a discussion? The reason I ask is that we're getting into Robert's rules here a little bit about whether we can revisit a vote, or I'm just being hypersensitive.
Yeah. I will have to check my notes whether this was a consensus discussion or an actual vote by the board.
If it was a vote by the board, then we'd have to have, I'm not sure how we'd do that, because who made the motion has to reopen, and it just gets...
Well, and the second, you know, the second has to remove the second, whoever made the motion, all the people who voted have to be present. It, I'm not sure if it's a feasible feat.
Yeah. I don't know if we have to do that, but I understand, you're right, that's what I'm, what I'm thinking about as you bring it up.
I'd also, I'd also add, you know, and I'm, first of all, I think that, I think putting things out to competitive bid, you know, when, when you can, or when, when you think it makes sense is a good idea from a business standpoint. But I'd also like to add that there are a lot of services we get from various contractors and service providers, you know, whether it's, you know, our insurance, or, you know, trash pickup, or, you know, any number of other things, that, you know, from year to year, there are times where we do put things out to bid and other times where we, you know, just continue to renegotiate with our current provider. And there can be different reasons, you know, I mean, I know that, in, in my time working with Mr. Kamala, you know, sometimes with insurance, for example, it's, okay, you know, every three years or so, it makes sense to, you know, put this thing out to bid and see what's out there and see if we can do any better. And so, to do, to do everything every year at the end of every contract, you know, sometimes it, it ends up spinning more cycles. I'm not saying this is one of those times, you know, I'm just saying that for consideration as, as, you know, we're taking these things up as we go along.
And through the, some of the legwork that I've done, I know that we haven't had this gone out to bid for like six, seven years anyways. And ideally, what I would love to see happen, I love the Harvey's, I'd love to see it go out to bid and see everyone's hard work come to fruition and say, this was the best deal that we could get. Because then we have seamlessness and, and the transition will be, you know, very minimal. But if company A, which is not Harvey's, comes in at $3 million, and we have a chance to save $1 million and a half dollars over the next three years, and, but in turn, we have to buy our own barrels, I don't foresee that to be much of an issue. And I know that Harvey's does a lot, like, in speaking to Mr. Kamala, you know, they have their recycling center, they have the program where they'll come out to your house and pick up your large ticket items to get rid of. And there's a whole bunch of intangible stuff that, that we don't see on a day-to-day basis by these people, but I don't foresee any, any of these companies that are bidding it if you said that to the same, asked them to do the same level of service that Harvey's. I don't think Harvey's is a, you know, like a, necessarily a gold standard, like, everyone aspires to be like Harvey's, I think they just aspire to pick up the trash and, and get it recycled and, and do the right thing. I have a feeling that all the other companies out there would be, will, it's a substantial contract, I have a feeling that all the companies out there would be willing to do the same services. And then let's see what they have for prices. If they, if they're within, you know, X amount of dollars, then stay with Harvey's. But I just...
Well, once you open the can of worms, I don't, I don't know if you have, I don't know if you have the option of within X amount of dollars, then you go with one or the other. I think it's kind of a low bid. Or whatever other system...
With comparable services.
Yeah, whatever other system you set up, you know, where you have a grading system, you know, you could have price be one component, and then the ability to liver, to, to deliver, you know, these other services, each one carry a certain weight.
Yep.
And then have some formula to tally it all up, and whoever comes in with, comes at the highest mark, you know, gets the bid.
So I just want to clarify the magnitude of the contract that we're talking about, there's different numbers, and I don't have the budget in front of me, so I apologize. What is the magnitude of what we're looking at here in terms of dollars? Mr., I see, and then this is kind of where I was thinking. Six, seven? There's $600,000 or $700,000. Is that, can you just walk us through what these numbers are real quick? Just, not detailed numbers, but what's the ma, Mr. Tedstone mentioned $4 million.
Yeah, we will give you the numbers in one second.
Through the chair, I, I have that information, I'm happy to share that. I'm a little sensitive to sharing it, since this may go out to a public bid, but it, these, these numbers are, are public, anyway.
That's a, that's a good point. And it was published in the Independent.
So the, if we, if we keep status quo, we're talking about $3.47 million over five years. If we go with auto, full automation, we're talking about $3.42 million over five years. And finally, if we do a hybrid, which is automated recycling, but manual trash, it's $3.41 million.
Okay. So this is a five-year contract, a five-year proposal, and I guess, sort of wearing my business hat for a second, the caught, the time value of money in renegotiating with somebody else, in my view, because you divide it by five, you're looking at 700, the $700,000 give or take number in my head, you're, you're getting down to some small dollars, right, on an annual fiscal year basis perspective? I think that's kind of was one of the things that we talked about in the previous board in staying with them, is what could we really save if we throw open the doors and start a process? But how much time are we going to spend in his salary and his salary and somebody else's salary and everything else to pick up 18 grand?
Yep.
You know, and believe me, I'm one to chase 18 grand wherever I can in town government, but there's a time value of money that you also have to throw into that mix. So from my perspective, I don't see the opportunity for improvement to be such that going out and opening the can of worms is going to save us, at the end of the day, a whole lot of money. And I think it's going to create a lot of aggravation that I think could flow down to the actual residents and what happens at their curbside, too.
Good.
That's just one, one person's opinion.
I think it's unfortunate that, you know, because of the election process and all that, this item is being raised at the 11th hour, perhaps it would be a good policy going forward, you know, as a contract comes up for renewal earlier on, to discuss whether things should be sent out for bid. And if, you know, we've been with one contractor for a long period of time, maybe it's time to just take a fresh look. But this is really late in the game.
Could be a charter review item.
Section 5-3, trash.
Not trash, but contracts with external vendors.
Any contract that's been out there for a long time, that, you know, on a certain periodic review.
Over a certain amount per year, and yeah.
Periodic review.
Something, yeah.
And I don't mean to downplay all the work that, that these guys have done. I've had a couple of long conversations with Mr. Kamala about it. And like we talk about, in the next couple of years, we're, we're some, you know, we're going to have to absorb quite a bit of, of money tax-wise. I'd like to, you know, if I can proactively tighten the belt a little bit, then great. And if the board doesn't see that that's, that that has value, then I'm fine with that, too.
In this process, we are legally allowed to continue with Harvey, correct? Yes. And we are legally allowed to negotiate with Harvey, correct?
That is correct.
So in, in my world during the day, on occasion, I will say to a supplier or a business partner, if I were to go out and bid this thing, what would I get back from you and your competitors? And a good supplier or partner is going to fess up and tell you what those numbers might look like. Have we had that question to, so, so instead of doing exactly what he is suggesting, but we have that conversation to truly understand what the market is? Has the market dropped 20 or 30% in the last couple of years for collection and redistribution of trash? That sounds like a huge drop to me. I'm wondering if the value of reselling some of the product that's recycled has dropped 20 or 30%, but not the value of the collection itself. So, I mean, if we had that conversation with Harvey, like, okay, we're under some pressure in Hopkinton to rebid this thing, if we do this, what are we going to see? And where are you guys? And why are, you know, are you competitive? Are you going to be competitive in that situation?
Yes, we have had that conversation with E.L. Harvey, as well as with our state coordinator for waste collection and management.
As well as what?
Our state representative on waste collection and management. We do have, Massachusetts has coordinators for these kinds of contracts.
Okay.
And our contact is Kathy Meza Best, out of Norwood now, and we, we have had extensive conversations with her in terms of what is she seeing in terms of numbers on contracts in other communities.
And is she comfortable with the numbers that we're talking about, or proposed numbers for the different options in front of us?
Yes, she is. And I say, I say that respectfully of, for E.L. Harvey.
Okay, so that's kind of what, you know, what I'm thinking, there's a little bit of due diligence in that mindset and that process without shifting gears wholly. I didn't know about this state representative, I thought you were talking about Ms. Dekeman for a minute there.
No, she's a, she's a coordinator.
Okay. Are we obligated to go through that person?
She's, she's offered as...
As a resource.
As a resource, she provides technical advice, similar to if we're working on land use-related issues and we work with MAPC, she's the equivalent of that.
And, yeah, and I'll just, I'll just say, I'm, I'm not sure, you might not have been at the meeting when we were discussing this a few months ago, and we were trying to figure out, you know, that the option had come up about putting this out to bid, or continuing discussions with Harvey. And that very topic came up, that we do have a state-level coordinator who gives you, you know, an idea of what the bids are looking like these days for a town of our size, and you know, on a, on a, you know, per-residence kind of basis. And, you know, Mr. Kamala was, was telling us that the numbers looked like they were tracking right in line with that. And that's why, you know, we felt comfortable with continuing with Harvey and continuing the relationship we've had. You know, at that time, we also told Mr. Kamala, as he was continuing the conversations, if they started to veer away from what that, those comfortable numbers were, then we needed to revisit it, so.
Okay. Does that make you feel any better?
No, not especially. I'm kind of thick-headed when it comes to that, but I'll go with whatever the board says.
Okay. Anybody else on the board thinking about a full rebid process? Okay, so we're going to table that for now, if that's all right?
Sure.
If, if we go down a path and that path starts to look a little crazy, then we can talk.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you for bringing it up. Okay, so, that aside for the moment, moving forward, we're going to have a pub, I think, we're going to have a public hearing on the 21st, we're going to have the trash cans on display between, can we have these for a while now? We've got them.
For hours.
We have these trash cans here for display, we should just line them up right here for the next couple of weeks. We can have that whole discussion and presentation that you had, I think we should allow an hour for this, frankly. A 20-minute discussion and 40 minutes for public input, I think that's, it warrants that kind of time. And then you guys can watch that upon your return. And then we'll try to get to some kind of resolution in our July meeting. So that would require that our relationship with Harvey continue as is until we get to some kind of discussion or decision.
What's the date of the July meeting, so that we can make sure that Mr. Cutino is available?
12.
Yeah.
July 12. Okay. Is everybody good with that general process and timeline? Mr. Westling, did you want to share anything with us? I'm sorry, Mr. Kamala?
If, if the, if the chair agrees, we would like to share with the board what we have heard so far from the community in terms of the feedback, as well as some of the conversations that we have heard. that we have heard with E.L. Harvey and the likely adjustments to some of the concepts that we've touched on in the past.
Okay, so you want to do that here for a few minutes?
Yes, we can do that very quickly.
Okay. We're going to close tonight at 10 o'clock regardless, because we're, we're going to run a little behind here, but we're going to close at 10 o'clock either way. So, Mr. Westling, if you want to take like seven minutes and walk us through what you know so far, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will focus on the, the comments that we've heard from the community. If you have other questions or comments, please let me know. When we did the presentation with the, the larger buckets, carts, 96-gallon for recyclables and the 64-gallon for trash, we had several comments from people that thought that that was either too large or would be too heavy to move. So, we, we spoke with E.L. Harvey, and E.L. Harvey has the option of the smaller 36-gallon. So, for those folks that, that can't perhaps move them to the, to the curb, or they've got a long distance to move them, we have options, and E.L. Harvey is willing to work with us on, on those options. We also heard from some folks that didn't want to use the carts for any number of reasons. Either they keep the trash in their basement and they couldn't carry the carts in and out, they don't have room to store the carts, those type of things. And we spoke with E.L. Harvey, and E.L. Harvey is willing to roll out the program, and those folks that want to opt out of it can opt out of it. For whatever their personal reasons are, they can opt out of it. E.L. Harvey will make accommodations to collect their trash and recyclables from the 32-gallon barrels that they may be using today, or other barrels.
So, in, in summary, what we heard from the community is, what are the opportunities for flexibility in this program? There will be flexibility in terms of cart size. There will also be flexibility in terms of participation. What we have discussed so far with E.L. Harvey is that, in terms of recycling, we would like to propose, for the board's consideration, rolling out the program townwide. Similarly, with the trash, we are suggesting rolling out the program townwide, however, with the ability for the residents to opt out.
And those that would opt out would basically opt back to what they have today?
Correct.
That's correct.
And that's from the length of the contract. From the length of the contract, it's not like a one-year trial, whether you opt out for a year, and in a year or two, the Harvey support. So-
From, from our discussions, it's for the length of the contract. Discussing the broad concepts, and this can be negotiated as we finalize the contract.
Opt out or opt in?
Opt. He, he's-
Out then in.
Yeah, we, we discussed this issue at length. Yeah, this morning. The idea is, the program is rolled out-
Yeah.
And we give the community some length of time to call in and say they're not interested. So, it's not a matter of us rolling the carts to your yard and saying, hey, these are your carts or else.
Find a place for it.
Exactly. We will give the community the time to call either DPW or call E.L. Harvey and say they want to opt out.
And through the chair, that primarily comes from the, the flexibility comes from the fact that the trucks aren't going to change on the streets. It's the way that the trash is collected. There's an arm that comes out, it's going to grab the trash, it's going to dump it. So, that makes it much more efficient for them. The trucks are on the street for less time, they have less slip and fall from the drivers getting out of the trucks, they have less back problems from the drivers lifting the heavy barrels. But because the trucks are the same on the street, E.L. Harvey can be flexible, and for those few folks or a number, however many folks there are that want to use their old system, the driver can still get out. It will still minimize the, the claims.
So, if somebody already has a heavy-duty barrel that looks just like these without the Harvey sign on the side, it's, it's achieving the same, the same goal?
Absolutely correct. And through the chair, as long as the, the barrels are sturdy enough, and most of them are when you buy them at this size, and they can be grabbed and dumped, E.L. Harvey will make accommodations to use the existing barrels.
Okay. Mr. Kamalo, sorry.
Yes.
I appreciate you looking at the clock.
The, the other piece of new information we want to share with the board is, we're always looking for opportunities to find savings for the community. We have identified in our conversations with our coordinator, a state grant that could potentially bring back to the town about $45,000. There is a grant program where strictly with recycling, the state can pay back to the community through a grant at $10 for each barrel. In our negotiations with E.L. Harvey, we have been pretty firm on the fact that if we are successful, if we are successful applying for that grant, that that benefit will inure to this community.
Even though they're buying the barrels?
That is correct.
And to, to further that, there's a requirement for the grant that the barrels become the property of the community at the end of the five-year contract, and E.L. Harvey was amenable to that as well. So, they would purchase them, we would pay $10 towards the cost. At the end of the contract, they would become property of the town.
And then, so the homeowners that have these barrels, like say, Mr. Catino has a fancy 64-gallon barrel that he wants to use himself, and then the first time Harvey's came and grabbed it and dumped it, broke it in half. Is that the homeowner's responsibility, or is that going to be the?
Through the chair, that's an excellent question. The barrels will be purchased and owned by E.L. Harvey through the term of the contract. If a lid pops off, if a wheel pops off, if they get cracked, E.L. Harvey's responsible to come out and either repair it or replace it as necessary.
That was an excellent comment to an excellent question. However, the question was, if it's your own barrel and Harvey's breaks it-
Yes.
Then you get a new one from Harvey.
Exactly.
But it looks like that.
The answer to that question, yeah. The answer to that question so far is that Harvey has only committed to maintaining and funding the barrels that they provide.
Right. But if you're using your own and then it breaks, it's logical that they would then give you the one that's-
Then, then you opt in, you call up and you opt in.
Okay, so-
What, what, I know it's changing, we're looking at time. There are other aspects of this, of the discussions with E.L. Harvey that I, I want the board to be aware of. As in the past, overflow bags continue to be part of this program. As in the past, bulk items, white metals, towns' ability to access the recycling center remain part of the conversation. In addition, there are several other things that we have also found to be of immense benefit to the community. If we proceed with the conversations with E.L. Harvey, we hope that the contract will reflect the following. As in the past, the town will not be responsible for paying any additional fee based on the increase in the number of households in town. This is a fixed contract. Number two, we went to town meeting and the town approved the dog park. In our discussions with E.L. Harvey, we have said and asked E.L. Harvey to be responsible for taking care of the waste from the dog park at no additional cost to the town. We have also-
Let's argue with that one. Are they going to do the collection of that waste?
Yes.
Okay, let's stay focused, please.
Exactly.
Sorry, I started it, my fault.
In addition-
Everyone will take the waste, it's compost.
Yeah. In addition, there are, there are three other key drivers in the cost of waste management in town, one being the, the cost of fuel. We have been particularly in our conversations that this contract will not, would not be adjusted based on whether the fuel prices go up or not. The second piece is with regards to the income from the recycling component. Most towns, if there's a change in the price of paper, goes down, as we all know now, the price of paper has gone down, towns end up paying more for recycling. We don't have that in our contracts. We will maintain this as a fixed, fixed contract. The public education, as we have heard from the Hopkinton Sustainable Green Committee, it's important that we continue to have the provider responsible for the cost of educating the public with regards to recycling, waste management, and so forth. E.L. Harvey will continue to do that. And finally, as I mentioned before, during the construction of the DPW facility, we will have, we will not have access to our fuel depot. There are several fuel depots in town. We have made discussion of access to Harvey's fuel depot, part of this discussion. Granted, yes, we can talk to other entities here in town for that facility, too.
Okay. All right, so what I see developing here is, we're headed down a path, although we've not decided anything. We're headed down a path where we're going to go to single-stream recycling, we're going to go to automated single-stream recycling pickup, as well as automated trash pickup. We're going to have a, a uniform program that gets rolled out across the community, but those homes where it doesn't work, for whatever reason, are going to have the ability to opt out and return back to what they know and work with today. And I think that's summar, and, sorry, and we're going to get together again on June 21st for an hour to talk about this in a public hearing format with the community. And then we're going to make a decision, hopefully in early July, specific to an implementation. Is that a fair representation of where we are? That's not an absolute answer, that's not the final decision, that is no decision, that's just what we're headed towards. But I think a lot of the questions that I heard when I attended the forum last Tuesday evening have been addressed based on what you're discussing this evening and the fact that people can opt back to what they have today. So, I think we're headed in the right direction. I'm sure we'll get some more feedback, and I'd encourage the community to continue to send us that feedback. It's been very helpful as I think about the issue, and as I'm sure as everyone else thinks about the issue. But for right now, I'd encourage us to table it until the 21st when we have the public hearing. Everybody good? Okay.
Good.
John, thank you very much for your input tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
And appreciate you bringing your props. Okay, that concludes the major agenda items for us this evening. We have left, real quick, board liaison assignments, board invites for board liaison assignments, click here. So, in your packet, we have the liaison list, but Mr. Kamalo, I'd like to table that until the next meeting. If anybody has a strong opinion about where they want to go and where they don't want to go, please share with town manager or his team before our next meeting, and we'll spend a little bit more time on that at our next meeting, okay? We won't get through that this evening and get out of here at 10 o'clock. Yeah, so just tell us where you want to go and we'll make it work. But just tell us before you're, you know what I mean? Just let us know where you want to go and we'll make it work. Okay, so we're going to hold off on that. Does anybody have any liaison reports to make from previous assignments or other stuff going on in town? Mr. Sestari?
Nothing.
All right, Mrs. Wright?
Nope, I don't have any.
Mr. Catino?
I went to the marathon closing. Closing ceremonies, there's something to that effect. It was, it was a very, very nice event at Labor's. It was well-attended. We saw that Mary Pratt was there.
Yep.
It was, it was a fun event. And thank you to everybody that helped with the marathon. It was really, it was a, it was a real success this year, and look forward to another one next year.
The only thing I have is this Sunday, they have Fireman Sunday at the fire station, so I'm, I'm planning on going there either as a, an old dog firefighter or as a representative of the selectmen. So, if we don't have anyone that's going as a selectman, I'd be happy to represent us. If we do have someone going, I got to go get a bigger uniform.
Great, if you can go, that would be great.
Great.
Anything else? So, I don't have anything as far as liaisons go. There have been a few events in town that we've scattered amongst us, we've been, all been to attending. I think all's good in that regard. Town managers' report.
I think we reported this point. I think-
We're moving this ahead, so that's going to keep you busy. Trash is going to keep you busy for a while. Okay, so you're good?
Yes.
Okay, future board agenda items. Mr. Sestari?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. So, future board agenda item, Mr. Kamalo, I'm, I'm wondering where we are with the HCA and their application process for a license. Last I heard, they were going to come back. I don't, haven't seen anything yet come across my desk, or desktop for that matter, specific to that. I think there's some things going on specific to the HCA that we want to help them sort through so that we can make this happen somehow, some way, in a way that works for all in town, but we need to be able to talk to them and make it happen. And I don't want to get too far down a path here and not set something up, because I'm concerned about how that might impact the long-term viability of this whole approach.
Yes, I can assure the board that we are actively engaged in conversation with the HCA. There are various components to the discussion, and the HCA is also looking at its, its options relative to how they will proceed.
Good. Yeah, we want, we want to make this work somehow, some way, but we've got to have a dialogue and get that, get it on our agenda. Okay? Anything else? So, with that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just have one-
I'm sorry, Mrs. Wright.
One remark. I know that we've got a good chunk of time set aside for the public hearing on the trash issue. I do think it's been well-covered in the HCA process and what went on here tonight, for those watching at home. I would recommend if we have the, depending on what else is on that agenda, we might have less public input than takes an hour, if there's any way that we can avoid putting another public hearing after that, so that, you know, we don't have, we have less than an hour's worth of public hearing, and now we have to wait the full hour for the next public hearing. So, maybe we can schedule that so that if there is less than an hour's worth, we can move ahead with the rest of the agenda.
Yeah, unfortunately, I, I believe we already have our legal license applications. The board has a fixed time period within which to act on those licenses.
But we'll try and arrange it in such a way.
Oh, I understand that. I just mean, when you put it, when you schedule a public hearing, public hearing has to happen at that designated time. So, if we put another public hearing after the trash one, and it, we don't encompass a whole hour for trash, now we're waiting for the public, so if there's a way that we can avoid putting another public hearing, not a public meeting, but a public hearing, so that we're not pulling our heels.
Mr. Sestari and I are smiling at each other, because I guarantee it was going to go a full hour.
All right, I'm just saying, you know, it's, I-
If it, I, I would love to be told I'm wrong, but I suspect it'll go a full hour.
In fact, Selectmen Wright, I, I like your comment. We've discussed this before. The board has, has had a different opinion. There are other institutions that, that schedule public hearings five minutes after the others for that reason.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this board is not interested.
We'll see what else is on. It's a great point. We'll see what else is on, but I, whatever time we opt for trash, I think it'll be, it will be taken. Okay. With that, board, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, I'm moved.
All those in favor? All right, opposed? Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.